And we did have some technical difficulties just recently with Holyoke Media. And one of the things that we did want to check before calling this to order, I mean, I'll call it to order, but Mike, Attorney Bissinette, we have a question for you. In the event, hi, in the event that the meeting, there's more technical difficulties, are we okay with open meeting law if we keep the meeting going and it's not livestreamed? Is that what you're asking, Jeffrey? Or on Zoom? Are we violating open meeting law in that case?
Do you have any members that would participate remotely this evening?
I did, I saw Counselor Jordan before, but I don't, I haven't, I don't see him right now.
It becomes more difficult if you have a remote member. The chamber is open, it's been publicized as a public meeting, but it's also been publicized as providing public access via Zoom. Technical difficulties are not regarded as open meeting law violations generally. So I think you'd be, you'd be okay to go forward. I believe Zoom records this, I'm not sure if Holyoke Media can be able to use that for its retransmission broadcast, but that might be, that might be one option to make sure it's recorded and available to retransmit later.
Okay. All right, well, we're gonna hope that there's no more technical difficulties. Okay. Thank you, Scott. That's why we're a little late, everyone. So I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is the June 18 regular meeting of the full city council. The clerk will call the roll.
Anderson Burgos.
Here.
Bartley.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Givner.
Here.
Greeney.
Here.
Jordan. McGrath Smith.
Here.
Murphy Rombaletti.
Here.
Ocasio.
Here.
Israel Rivera.
Here.
Jenny Rivera.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Beacon.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we're starting a little late because we, for those of you who weren't tuning in before, we did have a joint meeting of the school committee and the city council to vote on a new city council, or sorry, school committee representative at large. So that's why we're starting late. Counselor McGrath Smith.
So I'd like to make a motion to open the meeting, looking at the agenda ahead and knowing that we are starting this meeting at 7:46, but that we are heading to summer recess likely after this meeting, for us to, at the beginning, agree to an extension of the meeting beyond the 10:00 PM cap and to complete the meeting at the time that we complete all of the items on the agenda.
Second. All right, the motion's been made and seconded to allow the meeting to extend beyond the 10:00 PM cap until we're able to finish all items on the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. So the ayes have it. Counselor Jordan's here, thank you. And I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules to allow for Counselor Devine to invite our special guests here tonight.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I just would like to offer you this official resolution. Be it resolved that the Holyoke City Council extends its congratulations to the Pioneer Valley Lupus Support Group in recognition of their commitment and engagement on behalf of the over 5 million people affected with lupus. And be it further resolved that the Holyoke City Council extends its best wishes and continued success. That this resolution be duly signed by the President of the City Council and attested to, and a copy thereof transmitted by the clerk of the City of Holyoke, given by Tessa Murphy Rombaletti, attested by Brenna Murphy, sorry, Brenna Murphy.
Here.
Thank you, Leary, I apologize. June 4, 2024. And I'd also like to mention that purple is the color. There you go.
We'd like to thank the city council and all who were involved in giving us this proclamation for Lupus Awareness Month, which is, it's important to us that we educate the public as much as possible, because we would like people to recognize the symptoms of lupus, since it's not that well-known of a disease, so they can get themselves to the doctor and get a quicker diagnosis and be put on the proper treatment plan, because this could be a very fatal disease. You can die from it if it's not caught in time. So giving us this proclamation is a big step in the right direction for spreading lupus awareness, and we appreciate it very much. So thank you so much for your support.
Let me take a picture.
Thank you, very congratulations.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Enjoy the tomatoes.
Oh, thank you, I will.
Thank you very much for being here and for your patience. We appreciate your time, thank you. The first item on the agenda, as always, is the public hearing section. Yeah?
I have two moments of silence.
Oh, of course.
Are you okay, man?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you. If I may, to the body, I did want to just ask for two moments of silence, recognizing a couple people that we have recently lost who have contributed a great deal to the community. The first I'd like to recognize is our longtime DPW Commissioner Garcia Jose, recently passed away after a brief illness, and he had been on the DPW Commission for many decades.
Over 20 years.
Over 20 years, thank you, Patty. And just a tremendous guy. His wife is just a wonderful person. For years, he's been volunteering at the senior center, did just unbelievable work for the Knights of Columbus, for all kinds of different civic organizations, really cared about other people, and I wanted it to be said that we had a moment of silence Thank you. The other person I'd like to mention for a moment of silence also is an extremely distinguished member of the community, George Borogard. Judge Borogard, after many years of serving as obviously an attorney in the community, one of the founding members of one of the esteemed practices in the, in the city, also went on to serve for many years as a judge in the Holyoke District Court. George lived to, I believe he got over 100 years old, I'm not exactly sure the official...
99.
99, oh, I'm sorry. Didn't quite make it.
Just recently.
Okay, but George, just numerous opportunities I've had to, to talk with George over the years, always a wealth of knowledge, tremendous gentleman, as far as I know, a lifelong resident of the city of Holyoke, and just a wonderfully civic-minded person, a person of deep conviction, a person of deep faith, a person who just really cared about Holyoke generally, raised him and Doris, raised a tremendous family, and, and we lost Doris a number of years ago now, but George is gonna be deeply missed by many, many in this community, and also would like to have a moment of silence for George.
Thank you very much, Counselor. All right, public hearing, on the list, I have Deborah Aubrey. Come on up, Deborah. So Deborah, just in case this is your first time, you have actually two minutes to speak, and I'm keeping track of time, so I'll let you know. And just state your name and address for the record.
Deborah Aubrey. I live at 104 Beach Street in Holyoke, just before the Rotary. And as part of my regular commuting, I happen to pass by the Victoria Theater, and I have received some startling information about whether or not it is a historic site worthy of the preservation designation. And I want us to give reasonable review of the documentation for the tax credits, because it is a great concern of mine as a taxpayer that the taxes get allocated appropriately, both federally and within the state. So that's all I have to say. I'm here supporting David Weinberg, who knows way more about it than I do, but I worked for the National Park Service, I kinda know how it goes or should go, and so I'm sharing what I can share to make it an open process before we overinvest. And that's it.
Thank you very much.
Less than two minutes.
That's right. Thank you. Makes my job easier. I am not seeing anyone else signed up. And on Zoom, I have Spencer Fox Peterson.
Good evening, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name's Spencer Fox Peterson, 51 Portland Street, Holyoke. I am just calling in, reaching, it's on the agenda tonight, but there is some big news that was released about corporate landlords colluding to raise their rent, and it reminded me that it's imperative that we put in rental protections for people in Holyoke. Holyoke is over 60% renters. I'm a homeowner, but I see the importance of people having stable housing as paramount for public safety and public health. So stable housing is key, and I want to keep everybody in Holyoke. I don't want people to be forced out due to greedy landlords, and I know that's not every landlord in Holyoke, but if this is happening nationwide, we should really be looking to protect our community. And so there's people pushing, neighbor to neighbor and other groups pushing for office attendant protections. I know Josh Garcia has said he agrees with that. I just think, you know, the sooner we can get that done, the better for the community. I appreciate everybody's time today, and take care.
Thank you very much. And I believe, Counselor?
Yes, Madam President. Mr. Weinberg, maybe there was a little confusion on the list. He would like to ask to be added to public comment at this moment, if that's okay.
So feel, make sure that that microphone's on, and I will...
Is that on?
Yep.
Okay.
And then just state your name and address for the record, and I'll keep track of time for you.
David Weinberg, 3 Hillcrest Avenue, Holyoke. I'm just a concerned citizen about the Victory Theater, and I'll read this. Victory Theater is not on the Historic Registry. You can see the email from Jennifer Keith, and she says that it's, the support's that. And it's necessary to be on, to be certified to receive federal historic tax credits. Victory Theater has no federal historic tax credits. They report $6,915,000 on Table 2, which is incorrect. You must be on the National Historic Registry to receive federal tax credits. The Victory Theater is on the Mass Historic Registry. It has $4,100,000 in historic tax credits, not the $6,600,000 from Table 2. Tax credit amounts are from the Secretary of State website. And on this, I used only Victory Theater IRS filing, Secretary of State Historic Tax Credits, the list for that, and MIFA's current website for this report. MIFA's past artistic programs to be greatly expanded once Victory's restoration is completed...
One and a half minutes, keep going.
...have no prior successful financial record in Holyoke. Thus, follow the money. For example, between 2015 to 2019, MIFA had a combined budget of $2,401,000 and performance presentation income of $32,202. Income comes nowhere near paying for the budget. Can MIFA expect to credibly be able to pay for much higher debt and expenses during and after restoration?
That's time. That's time.
Time is up.
Two minutes, yep.
Gotcha.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I'd like to move that we extend the gentleman's time for another minute to continue his conversation.
Second.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'll start the minute for you now. Go ahead.
I think you are on number 10, maybe?
From 2021 IRS, from the IRS 990s, Sanders listed travel as $49,029 with $950 revenue from programs. Explained with receipts the need to travel to set up programs with so little financial Sanders has combined his fundraising to include both funds to restore Victory Theater and funds to put on events under MIFA. We don't know where the money is going and how he's spending the money. Money raised, I assume, from these figures, though Palmer has stated at the last council meeting that the figures for both federal and state tax, historic tax credits could be $19 million. I have no idea where that comes from.
Thank you, that was just a minute, appreciate it. All right. I'm not seeing anyone else, so with that, I'm gonna head into the communications.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Do you want to take one, two, and three as a package?
Second.
And suspend the rules, I think they're all reappointments.
Yep. Great. So motion was made and seconded, oh, yeah, we need to pick a name.
I'm not a volunteer.
Oh, did you want to pick it, Counselor? Okay.
Yeah.
Counselor Sullivan? You're voting first tonight. Sorry.
Better you than me.
Okay. Item number one is from Mayor Garcia, letter reappointing Haley Dunn of 1099 North Hampton Street to the Board of Registerable Voters. Item two is also from the mayor, reappointing Kenneth Harstein of 56 Nonotuck Street to serve as a commissioner of the Soldiers Memorial. And three is from Mayor Garcia, reappointing Beth Goslin of 1070 North Hampton Street, that's where I grew up, to serve on the local historic district commission for Fairfield Ave.
Motion to approve all the, all the reappointments.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve all reappointments. Under discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item number four is from Floran Marodian, request to withdraw special permit application for home occupation at 42 Arndale.
We receive.
Motion to receive. Even approve without prejudice?
Second.
Motion to receive and approve without prejudice.
Is there a community report we can combine with this?
There...
Is there a DGR, maybe?
Yeah. I think it's item 35.
35? A motion to suspend, take up item 35. Second.
Well, motion has been made and seconded to suspend the rules and take up item 35 with item four, and item 35 is the Committee on Development and Government Relations, to whom was referred an order for a special permit application for a home occupation at 42 Arndale versus driveway seal coating business. Recommended that the special permit be denied?
And my motion says give a leave to withdraw, that's okay.
Second.
Because he doesn't want to do it, right?
Motion has been made and seconded to give leave to withdraw, under discussion. Counselor Givner, as the chair, did you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam President. I mean, it seemed like there was some, in, in the DGR committee, it seemed like the recommendation from our law department was that this was actually not necessarily the right permit that he would need for this type of business, because it was their opinion that the permit would allow for a business that primarily takes place at the home, and there was some disagreement with, on the committee as to whether or not that was the case, but considering that he has withdrawn his desire for this, I think that's fine.
Anyone else, Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I really want to, through the presence of the chair, I really want to appreciate her running a good meeting that night. And then I would also say that I didn't necessarily agree with the law department, so I would be of the opinion that I would like to see that reduced to some kind of a memo where we can better understand what this home occupancy special permit's for. So do I have to file a late file to do that, or can we just pass that on a voice vote now, maybe get a communication for when we meet again in August? I don't know what the best, if you got, if you got a thought on that, but it was, it was not, to me, there was, there are too many open questions that were left there, and I'd like to find something a little more solid in which we can base our opinion next time.
Okay. Was that a motion?
Second.
That's okay, yeah, keep in mind, I'll make the motion, just to get a communication.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded, under discussion. Counselor Devine?
I, to be honest with you, I'd prefer to have Counselor Bartley file an order and have it done in August, but that's my opinion.
Okay. So the motion on the floor is to ask the law department for legal opinion, clarifying...
Yeah, for a legal opinion relative to the special permit that Mr. Marodian applied for. That's the motion.
So on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, so the ayes have it, and Attorney Bissinette, and the law department? Thank you. I don't know if there's a DGR meeting scheduled yet, but thank you. Okay. So that was for...
Oh, and then on the main motion, to give leave to withdraw without prejudice at the request of the applicant.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to give leave to withdraw without prejudice at the request of the applicant.
That number four, Kevin?
That is gonna be number 35 plus number four together.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Well, I think we need a roll call.
Oh, you're right.
That's okay.
City clerk? The clerk will call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Beacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rombaletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Vouviers, one nay.
Okay, with that, you've passed it. Item number five is from David Weinberg, information regarding MIFA Victory Theater.
Motion to receive.
Motion to receive has been made and seconded, under discussion. Counselor Bartley?
Yes, I think Mr. Weinberg just addressed us, and I think he summarized his, his comments in a communication which he filed with a clerk. So I would like to see this sent somewhere so we could have, it was already in DGR, and it was very helpful, and it was a good meeting, but I, I don't know where, if we can, where else this thing can go, because right now we have an open question rel, I mean, I'm sure the chair is aware that this, the whole thing about the Victory Theater has been going on for 35-plus years. You know, some could say it's one of the longest-running jokes in the city, or, or some could say, well, maybe there's, there's, there's a game plan, and, and, but I can't count how many times I've heard shovels in the ground from the director, and I don't know if there's been too many shovels in the ground relative to the Victory Theater. So at what point do we say, this is it? And what, I mean, and actually mean it? So I don't really know what to do, I mean, maybe collectively we can think about it. I don't expect to have an answer right now, but I will say, appreciate Mr. Weinberg and others working this, a total volunteer, there's no hidden agenda, they just want to get an answer. And I think a lot of, a lot of us have been, a lot of us in this room would like, we want the Victory to succeed, I want the Victory to succeed, but, I mean, this is, I mean, I'm here 13 years, this is the same song I've been, I've been hearing the whole time, and others have been here a lot longer than me, so.
Sure.
At any rate, hopefully we can find common ground on this.
Great. Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Madam President. So I just wanted to share that I thought that the discussion in DGR was good, their presentation was helpful. I think it's unfortunate that Mr. Weinberg wasn't there, and I think some of the guests today would be better served if we did have some other kind of community meeting where all parties are present, so that questions can be asked and there can be a little more interaction, because I don't think it's really helpful to have one presentation without people there, you know, for whatever reason, didn't know that meeting was happening or didn't get a notification, but things didn't line up in a way that make, that made the meeting do everything we really needed it to, because I, for one, don't like having 12 meetings about the same thing, but I think, I know that Victory Theater has mentioned they'd be interested in doing like a community meeting, they've talked about doing something at Holyoke Media, and I think something like that we could publicize in the city and make sure that any residents and any community members could be present, and everyone could share their, their thoughts, their opinions, ask questions directly to, to the Victory people, and finally get these questions answered, because it's valid. If there's questions that are unanswered and people weren't present at the meeting to ask them, they still need to be answered. So maybe we can work something out that way without just, without sending it to another committee, you know, I feel like it's a little more restrictive in, in the, in the chambers here. Thanks.
Counselor Greeney?
Yeah, quickly, I'm one of the skeptics, obviously, as I've spoken in the past. I don't know if this, this, this communication warrants a legal interpretation or something, somebody from the law department to look into it, but it seems to me that there, it's accusatory in some senses, and I don't want the city to be involved in it if, if there is something that is illegal or something that's not right that's going on here with this. Certainly, to follow the money, and since the Iron Hammer exhibit back 30, 40, 50 years ago, this money was supposed to go into the Victory Theater, and now the most recent addition that we have at the Victory Theater is those cement blocks around, and there are some new signs around it, but I don't know, but I think that this, this warrants probably, you know, some legal interpretation. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Well, there was a motion to receive.
Second.
I mean, I...
Make a motion to request Attorney Bissinette to comment on this communication?
Well, sure, we can have Attorney Bissinette speak. I don't know if he's prepared to actually give a legal opinion on the spot, but is there a motion to suspend the rules and allow the Attorney Bissinette to speak?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Attorney Bissinette, do you have anything you could weigh in on?
I think we should wait until we can have another hearing with the participants from MIFA and along with the interested citizen. The kind of allegations that are made in that letter are quite significant, and there may be some people's interests and rights at stake, so I don't think the city should get too much further into this. There are other investigatory avenues, including the State Ethnic Commission, that may play the proper role here. the proper role here, but I'm a little concerned that we take kind of a lead role in doing any investigations. That's really not, in my estimation, what the Solicitor's Office can do. But we certainly could look at something and make a referral, and that would be solely based on either the documents presented, or if there was a hearing with both parties, then we could have the fruits of that as further information on which to base a possible referral. But at this point, I don't think there's anything that is sufficient enough to rise to the level of making a law enforcement referral, as far as I can tell from the statements made tonight.
Thank you, Attorney Bissinette. Counselor Bartley?
Madam President, can I just make the recommendation that we, I'll make a motion that we refer this, we also have a receipt, but refer to our local historic commission, and perhaps they can, maybe they can review it, have a public hearing, and then maybe we can gather, they can gather more facts and perhaps proceed accordingly.
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to receive and refer to the local historic commission. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. All right, item six is from City Clerk Brenna Murphy McGee and Administrative Assistant Jeffrey Anderson Burgos, the minutes from the May twenty-first meeting. Any corrections or anything?
Make a motion, receive and I guess adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item seven is from, it's under petitions, from residents of Woodland Street, a petition for installation of a new storm drain.
I'm sure.
Yep.
Can I make a motion?
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, this will be a motion to receive, but also refer this to the, well, we don't, refer it to the Board of Public Works for a follow-up, and hopefully they'll get some direction, and they'll invite in maybe Beth and some of the other residents and go from there.
Okay, so Counselor Rivera?
I just have a question about public hearing with regards to that petition. Do they require a public hearing because they filled out the petition, just like you would for the speed bumps?
I don't, I don't think so.
No?
Attorney Bissinette, you want to confirm that? Do we need a public hearing for a petition like this? I don't think we do.
Just a question.
Yeah, no, it's a good question.
Yes, the Board of Public Works has to look at this and make the necessary calculations.
Okay, but not us, right? That's not hosted by the council?
Right.
Okay.
It would be referred to the Board of Public Works.
Okay. Counselor Devine?
To the Board of Public Works Commission, and that way at their next meeting they can take this up.
Great.
That was my motion, I waited for a second.
All right, so Counselor Bartley has made a motion to...
Oh, okay, thank you.
Sorry, thank you. To send to the, receive and send to the Board of Public Works. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item number eight, oh, item number eight, I'm going to recuse myself. Counselor Jordan, would you like to?
Sure.
Do this one?
I'll be happy to help.
This is a special permit for a cannabis company.
Does this mean we're skipping the president?
Oh, my gosh, I skipped the president's report. Sorry, Counselor Jordan.
She wants to get out of there. I don't blame her.
Oh, my gosh, maybe that was a...
My apologies, everyone.
No, 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 that's, I just got so excited to get this party started. All right, I have my notes. Okay, have a few updates for you all. So you may have seen Jeffrey sent a calendar invite to hold a date for a special meeting. That was at the request of the mayor. We're actually, we're trying to figure out if we need to do that, that's related to free cash, but I also did want to let you all know that I go to the monthly, the mayor does monthly finance department head meetings every month, and I attend on behalf of the city council. And so at the last meeting, it looks like we're trying to set the tax rate at either the November nineteenth meeting or the December third meeting, but the state says we absolutely have to set the rate by December third, so stay tuned for that. Also, there's a late file that was filed by Counselor Bartley and myself related to the September meetings. As you may or may not know, we do have to change the date for, we had, there's an election the first Tuesday of the month in September, and then we have Hoyoke Day at the Big E is the third Tuesday, and I do not want us to not have a meeting in September, so we're recommending that we meet on the Wednesday after those meetings. So just want to give everyone advance notice, don't want to have to like skip over all of September. And then just want to give a quick shout-out to Laura Shaw. She's our tax collector, she's getting forty under forty on Thursday, so we're very proud of her. Go Laura. Shout-out to J, no, Juan, he was at the Pride 5K, and he won third overall and first in his division. Way to go, bud. Me and Patty were registering people in because those who can't run, register, that's us. And then the reminder that the fireworks are Friday, June twenty-eighth, with a rain date of June thirtieth, so, well, I did mention Pride Fest last time, so I apologize. This weekend, Saturday, in Veterans Park, Pride Fest is happening. It's going to be a great day, hopefully good weather, so we'll all be there. Okay, anyone else?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you.
Item number eight is a report from the Committee on Ordinance, to whom was referred an order, a petition of Blue Fox Brands, Inc., for a special permit for a marijuana manufacturing establishment to be located at One Cabot Street. The committee recommends that the special permit be granted with the following conditions: One, that the owner of the building always pay the commercial property tax rate to the extent allowed by federal, state, and local laws for the duration of the special permit; Two, that the business retain a minimum of thirty percent Hoyoke residents for non-security jobs; Three, that the hiring preference be given to security personnel that are retired Hoyoke police or a retired member of another police department that now lives in the city of Hoyoke; Four, that there shall be no marijuana consumption allowed on-site; Five, that the hours of operation be Monday to Friday, six AM to twelve AM, Saturday and Sunday, seven AM to two PM; Number Six, that the applicant must abide by the Massachusetts general laws and guidance from the Cannabis Control Commission; Number Seven, that the petitioner or applicant shall conform with city and state health laws, rules, and regulations, including odor nuisance controls for the duration of the permit; and Number Eight, that if substantial progress has not occurred within two hours of, two years of issuance of the special permit, an extension shall be required; and Item Number Nine, that Items Two A and Two B on the planning board letter dated May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four be adhered to, and this comes to us by way of a committee recommendation from Councillors Israel Rivera, Counselor Bacon, Counselor Bartley, and Counselor Jenny Rivera. And I recognize the chairman, Counselor Israel Rivera.
Thank you. Sitting President Jordan for the moment.
Yes.
So we had the Blue Fox, the Brands Incorporated in, they came in with their lawyer, I believe is Ezra, usually represents most of the cannabis industries when they're coming in. They're going to be located at that Cabot Street facility all the way where Cabot and Canal Streets meet. This is a building that a lot of the manufacturing cannabis industry is kind of moving into. A lot of questions came up around parking specifically and traffic. Counselor Ocasio and Counselor Jenny Rivera, who both represent Ward One and Two, had questions around traffic and parking, as well as what impact do they think it would have on the community? They answered them in the sense of, we are working on just doing manufacturing, so they're not necessarily focused on selling retail. So for them, there will only be a certain amount of people in the building or using the particular parking spots throughout the day. They had asked for two shifts originally, but in the future, they're probably working on for the third shift, if I'm correct, or maybe they asked for the third one. A fellow councillor that was president could probably correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it was asking for the two shifts first, and then later on they'll ask for the third after they find out how business rose. But for the most part, the meeting went well, they agreed to most of the terms that were listed, and it looks like that they're going to be ready to start up as soon as they get the permission to start up so that they can start to build out. But yeah, for us, it got approved five-zero. The only concerns were mostly around the traffic and the parking, and I think for us in the long term is to have the conversation with the property owner as to how he's going to manage the building and the parking around all the businesses that are within that particular building. So, thank you.
Is there a second to adopt the committee report?
Second.
Second. Under discussion, Counselor Sullivan.
Yeah, I would just like to point out there that the owner of the building is not the applicant, so to hold the applicant responsible for paying of the taxes, I mean, I'm still going to vote in favor, but it's a little bit of a stretch. And also to remind everybody that we have no mechanism of enforcement or even monitoring whether any of these businesses comply with the hiring of thirty percent Hoyoke residents. So, just to get that out there.
Okay. Any other discussion?
If I may, just to speak to that, I fully, wholeheartedly agree with the points made by Counselor Sullivan. I think the only thing is, the one bullet point, the one around the property tax rate, I agree, but this is something that a lot of other businesses have already agreed to too as well, so to keep it consistent, although it may not now, I'm reading it myself, kind of, because it's not always the case, sometimes they are the building owner too as well, but maybe it could be clarified in the future, but for now, for the sake of consistency, it makes sense to kind of keep it that way, and I thank you for pointing it out. And then the second piece, yes, there is no mechanism in place currently to find out or to police the thirty percent piece, but they said they're a business from Michigan, and they have a couple other businesses, and in Michigan, they, seventy percent of their workforce is from the community. I'm not saying that that's what they're going to do now, but that's their goal, but thank you.
The only thing I'll point out to the council's attention is that the owner is required to sign the application, otherwise you're not even allowed to apply, because it is a special permit, and therefore that is an interest in property, and therefore the owner of the building is essentially, by consenting to this, agreeing to go along with the conditions of it, and one of which it spells out in one, the owner of the building always pay the commercial property tax rate, so that is essentially what they're signing up for. Counselor Sullivan, did you, are you all set? Okay. Counselor Bartley?
I think the points by Counselor Rivera and Counselor Sullivan are very good. I would just point out that we put those conditions on regularly as a condition to a special permit, and if the building commissioner, or the Board of Health, or some other department wants to go ahead and check on that, there's nothing preventing them from doing so, and then coming back to us with a report, and if they're non-compliant with the condition of the special permit, the special permit goes away. So if there's a councillor that has a particular interest in a business or just wants to set up some kind of random process, I would say consult with the building, and it seems like the building commissioner is now gung-ho about sending out ten thousand letters relative to three and up family homes, and that's great, not complying with state law after forty years, that's good news, so if they want to do that, then great, but now they can reach out into other areas, and this might be one in particular in which they can check to enforce.
Okay. Any other discussion? Counselor Griny?
To be consistent, I will be voting no on this, because on every marijuana issue that's come before the council, when I was a member, I voted no on, except for one, and that was the testing laboratory to make sure there was no fentanyl in the marijuana. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else like to be heard? Counselor Ocasio?
I'm also going to be voting no on this because of the traffic issue. It seems like, you know, every, right there, that place is very congested, and my concern is somebody getting hurt there or another accident occurring there, and it seems like it's, nobody's listening, you know, like, my concern is people that be crossing, they not only drive through there, there's people walking through there with bags and stuff that they go back and forth into Chicopee, into Hoyoke constantly, so there's no proof that, and there's not going to be any proof that that area is going to be safe, so I'm voting no on that. Thank you.
Counselor Jenny Rivera?
Thank you. I'm also going to be voting no on this, as I'm going to echo some what Carmen Ocasio, Counselor Carmen Ocasio said. Like, that area right there is a lot of traffic with the trucks, PBTA buses going up Cabot Street into Chicopee. I just feel the traffic coming out of the establishment is just going to cause more and more traffic, so I myself is going to be voting no.
Okay, thank you. Counselor McGrath Smith?
I want to thank the councillors that came to the subcommittee meeting where we had a very rich discussion about this project, and a lot of concerns came up around traffic, and I will say that this project gives me pause after us talking recently about the host community agreements. I feel like maybe the sense I'm getting is that we are likely not to pursue fees moving forward, and yet there does seem to be a really real impact here that we could name, that there is a traffic issue and that mitigation would need to be done in order for this project to have a positive and not a negative impact on the community. And yet I'm not sure that will be pursued, so I'm not sure, you know, and yet we are not approving the host community agreements, so I'm not sure we have any power in order to push, but I think that perhaps we can use our influence to make our case to the law department, to the mayor, that they should still be pursuing where they can mitigation that's real and tangible if we can prove that there's going to be a physical impact on an area that could be mitigated by raised crosswalks or a new light, or something that will incur the city a real cost. Thank you.
Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. So I would just remind the committee and make sure the body is aware that during the public hearing, I did ask the applicant if the host agreement did include any mitigation money, because we've received no information from our legal department in terms of the status of those at this time. At that time, the applicant said that the host agreement model by the CCC, which is what I understand we're using in the city now, includes up to five percent mitigation fees. Whereas the initial agreements anticipated that would just be paid, this agreement requires the specific documentation as to what that charge would be for, but I think in this particular example, the argument could be very clearly made relative to parking and traffic, and then to the extent that all of the occupants of that property have host agreements, they could all be brought to bear relative to mitigation. And when I did ask relative to documentation on mitigation issues, I've been told that that is being documented, but we've never seen any, but it did seem like the mechanism is there to make it happen if it's needed, which was documented in the hearing. Thank you.
Okay. Any other councillors like to be heard? Counselor Devine?
Yeah, just one thing I've learned over the years, especially having been a ward councillor, you need to listen to your ward councillors that are in that area, that know the traffic much more than I do, and so I would be voting no because... the traffic much more than I do, and so I would be voting no because of what you've said.
Any other, anybody else? Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, I would just like to point out to my fellow councilors, the owner of the building, I believe is from New Hampshire, came into the city, took one of our historic mill buildings, and has spent a considerable amount of time and money developing this building, keeping it on the tax rolls. If you remember, we had quite a time going through purchasing, even to get it back out, and an RFP out on the building. So, and the idea that was presented to us was it was gonna be developed for the use of multiple businesses, not for one. So now to deny him the ability to take in any more tenants, when we talk about being business friendly, this one just rings as a real red flag to me, so.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, thank you, this is the last time I'll speak, so, on this topic. So I would just ask my friends who indicated they voted no, just to consider these options. So, A, they were at the meeting, and they did not, neither indicated on the microphone that they planned to vote no because of traffic mitigation. In other words, I'm not targeting them, I'm just saying, you could have asked a question to the applicant right then and there, whether, you know, you would be willing to offer traffic mitigation. No such questions were asked. Second off, this is a special permit, Mr. President. We can add another condition, and I'll suggest one right now, that the applicant have the special permit so long as they come back with a traffic mitigation study, and by the way, even if that doesn't pass, they have to come back annually for a renewal of the special permit. So if they're not in compliance, I mean, I hate to have, you know, you're penalizing potential jobs, they were saying 80%, nevermind the 30, 80% of the Holyoke jobs for Holyoke people, so he committed to that on the microphone, and now we've got this, I know there's traffic there, I get it, but this place is open at the crack of dawn every day, I'm just thinking there's not gonna be a lot of traffic on the inbound, maybe on the outbound, there would be, but I would, you know, look, if they would sort of work with me on this, just sort of step back a little bit, we can recommend a condition to the permit relative to traffic studies. I would maybe leave that to the chair, to maybe have him, you know, he's been at this game a lot longer than me, you know, maybe there's some kind of verbiage, we can add as a 10th condition, we have every right to add that right now, we don't have to have their approval, we have the right to add it right this minute. And, top of that, if the mayor says, the mayor has the right to veto it, then we have, then we'll have another discussion, if that's too much for the mayor and the applicant. Or we could say theoretically, that we would like to have the applicant and the building order, owner, recommend traffic and parking mitigation to this city council, so the special permit would almost be like a temporary thing, and if they don't get back to us with a plan and say six months, then the permit goes away. So, that's my, I'll make a motion that we, what did I just say, Juan, that we add a 10th condition to this special permit, that the owner of the building and this particular applicant come back to the city council with a recommendation within six months of the date of this vote, with a traffic and parking mitigation plan.
I'll second, second.
Just taking some notes here, so I make sure I restate this back correctly.
May I just add one other thing, Mr. President?
Just a moment.
Let me.
First thing I'd like to mention, though, is just to clarify, this is a special permit, this isn't renewed every year, just so, this, once granted, it's granted. This doesn't, this isn't, this isn't like a home occupation.
I wasn't sure, that helps me, so, but the six months, then we can trigger that in a permit?
Indeed, you could. You could add a 10th condition that, assuming that they're agreeable to it, but that's up to them to take the permit with these conditions.
Without doubt, but sure, I mean, sure, but that gives a little breathing room for six months, and under, whatever it was, 9.4.3, I think that's what it is, but it might be two, the city council has every right under our ordinance to add reasonable conditions to a special permit.
For sure.
A traffic and parking plan, to me, seems to be reasonable, and I don't think it can be challenged as being unreasonable, and if we say they have to come back in six months, well, guess what, if they don't come back in six months, they're noncompliant with the special permit, the special permit goes away, so there's a motion.
Okay, so there's a motion that's been made and seconded to add a 10th condition, which is that within six months of the, assuming this passes, granting the special permit that the applicant will be required to provide to the city council satisfaction, I, you know, a traffic and parking mitigation plan. Okay, that's been made and seconded, so we're under discussion of that. I want to recognize Counselor Anderson Burgos, who had his hand up next.
Thank you, Acting President Jordan. So I just want to stay for the record, this is definitely not my first, I don't know how many, but I'll say a ton of these applications have been before me, and during the conversation, a big bulk of that conversation has always been traffic, traffic study, the impact of traffic, and safety, and so on and so forth, and I feel that looking at this one under a microscope differently than we have in the past, that's creating not good for business, not good for measure, as a city council, as a body of our routine. Now, I'm not saying that we should always follow every single routine, but in this case, they have done everything that has been expected as all applicants, and to change and treat this one differently, kind of, I don't know, I'm not, I'm gonna vote yes, just because I want to be consistent with every single applicant that's been before me. As an elected official, it is important for me to stay on that path, and the way I look at things is, you prove me wrong, then I know better, but I have to give this company at least a head start.
Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Counselor. So I feel very much the same about consistency, I think it's a little late to be adding stipulations to people's special permits, I do think that should have happened in ordinance, I understand, and I appreciate that Counselor Bartley mentioned that we can make those changes here, and I think that's great. However, there are other cannabis companies in that building, and they're not gonna have this stipulation on their special permits, so I feel like that's already an issue, to say, oh, you know, we just got, we just got this extra condition on our special permit, but no one else in the building did, so now we alone in this building are now responsible for the traffic mitigation outside. So I think, once again, we need to take a long, hard look at the stipulations we put on special permits, and if we need to consider traffic mitigation, which it sounds like we always talk about, it's mentioned that we talk about this every time a special permit for a cannabis company comes up, then it's really, you know, shame on us for not dealing with this yet, but I don't think we should be making new businesses suffer. I know people who are going into this business, who've tried to get in, who have been working on this for three, four years, they spend a lot of money jumping through the CCC hoops, and then to be right, what they see is getting close to the finish line, and to have us come back at them with one more thing, you know, these people pay rent every month, even when they're not open, they're not able to generate business until they're open, and so I think we need to be a little more sensitive, and to the point that we already have, you know, not the best reputation for being the most business-friendly city, how can we attract businesses if every time a business turns around, we're adding a stipulation sort of behind their back, and then expecting them to adhere to it, and it's not the same stipulation everybody else who has the same permit has? So I think we need to do a little bit of soul-searching as a body, and figure out how we can create better or more stipulations, and make it, you know, the same for everyone, because we should hold everyone to the same standard, so if we need to change everything, you know, on the next go-around, if they expire in a year, I think we have time to do that, and we should really consider that, because I think the points about traffic are incredibly important, and I'm sure there's some other things we might want to add as stipulations that have come up in the meantime. Thanks.
Counselor Devine, did you want to still be heard, or you're all set?
Now I'm more confused than ever, because I said we need to listen to the ward counselors, and then two ward counselors make perfect sense, so I'm not sure what to do now, I hate to put you guys on the spot again, how are you feeling about this discussion?
I will recognize them momentarily, but just not yet, because there's some people ahead of you. Counselor Sullivan had his hand up next.
Yep. Through the acting president to the chair, Counselor Rivera, this is a manufacturer, there's no retail sales here. So, there's no retail sales, I don't see, you've got a shift coming and a shift going out, I don't see, this whole thing about traffic mitigation seems to be a tempest in a teapot to me.
Okay, next up, Counselor Rivera.
So, thank you. So, I believe there might be one retail, but they're not even open yet, and the retail that they're doing is limited hours, and it's smaller.
This applicant?
Right.
Is not retail?
No, this applicant is not retail.
It's just an employee, couple of employees, and they're a boutique manufact, they're not a GTI or something?
Thank you, Mike, but I was waiting my turn, bro. Thank you, thank you for all that, I appreciate that, and that is all facts, you're not lying on any of those. I think, for me, though, the applicant, to speak back to the situation, first of all, I agree with Counselor Givner to add another stipulation, it might, it might feel like we're singling this particular company out, and it might bring legal issues if this does not pass right now, because if other tenants within that building has a particular system or whatever we outlined for them, and then we added a 10th one, and no one else has that, that's unfair, and it looks like we're kind of being, how do you say it, targeting them in a sense, right? I don't want to look like that, so I wouldn't agree to add the 10th stipulation. As much as I want to vote in the same direction as you guys, Counselor Rivera and Counselor Ocasio, because I agree with traffic, and I agree that a lot of the cannabis industries have been coming into the neighborhoods, and they have been saturating the neighborhoods, and not necessarily for the sake of the residents and the people that live in the communities, not really caring in a sense, right? Like, some of them do come out, and they donate, and they help organize certain events, but like, the people that actually live in the neighborhood don't actually interact with them on a regular basis, like you would think, or like they had mentioned in the beginning, especially with the change-up of the language around some of the things with the community impact fees, I'm a little upset with that too, but I have to still err with the caution of like, it's not necessarily this business's fault, it's more about how we allow this building owner to do what he is doing right now, right? So it's okay economically in a sense, because it's a co-work space, it feels like, but it doesn't make sense traffic-wise and parking-wise. So these applicants went in, and thinking that everything is okay, and paying money, paying rent, and being sold a dream, when in reality, the building owner is just giving a couple of spaces to everyone, and thinking that everything will be okay, and nobody's really holding this building owner, and I don't want to say accountable, because that's not the case, but at least having the conversation with them, like, dude, we gotta figure out traffic, we gotta figure out parking spaces, because you're putting in a lot of businesses, and you're only counting on a limited amount of parking spaces to be able to control the influx of traffic, and all these other issues too as well. So I kind of, I don't want to say that I'm, I don't want to vote with you guys, because I'm with you guys 110%, but it would suck to see how much money these people would lose the moment we vote no on the permit, based on a building owner, not based on what they did. That's the only thing for me. Thank you.
Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. So I seconded that motion, because I didn't want the debate and discussion to end, and I saw people lining up against supporting the special permit, but I do not support adding this 10th amendment, but I didn't want the discussion to just end, because I think it's an important discussion. Back in the early days, when this business owner came in with some of the early applicants, we had pointed discussions relative to traffic and parking, and the agreement was that the owner of the building would come up with a plan, and that as we went, we would see how the parking lined up with the ordinances. Now, when this applicant came in, I asked that question relative to the property and the laws, and how many spaces there were. It was stipulated to us in the hearing that there were adequate spaces for the businesses that are currently in the building. Now, that doesn't stop us from going back to the property owner and saying, we'd like to see your plan, it sounds a little fuzzy, because it is fuzzy, because they're basically operating on a first-come, first-served basis. But the point was, there's an adequate number of spaces, given the measures that we use for these businesses, so I do think it would be unfair to tag the last one in with a condition that we have put on none of the others. Having said that, I think it would be perfectly reasonable to check in with the business owner through an order of some sort relative to traffic mitigation, to ask them to come in, maybe to DGR, and talk about what is the plan, and is it adequate, is it working for everybody now that they're ramping up? And so I would just encourage, because, I mean, I'm a ward counselor, so I tend to be more relying on you, it's just, I happen to know the history of this building from the early special permit days, so I would encourage an order to be filed, and I would even join on the order relative to pursuing a plan from the owner, but I would hope we would pass this particular special permit, it's a pretty small business, it's not adding much to the property in terms of busyness, so I'm looking at it pretty much through that lens, because I'm not a big fan of the business anyway, but that's all I have for you, but I would encourage us to approve this special permit, and then pursue the issue. Thank you.
Counselor Jenny Rivera?
Okay, and I really like how this is going, how we're all being respectful to each other, because we all should agree to disagree. I don't expect anyone to vote the way I'm voting, everybody's entitled to vote in their own directions. I did bring it up when we were talking, and I see the full picture now that everybody has spoken, and it's true, it would seem like we're just targeting that one business, and I agree, but we did speak up in the meeting, and I said, maybe if, and he was there online, so he heard, that if somehow he could direct the traffic, instead of coming down on Cabbage Street, going down to Appleton, where it's less traffic, that's where I was talking and seeing if we can do, but if it's gonna ruin his, you know, the special permit, I get it, but that's where we were coming from, so we, you know, if there's a way that we could put in order afterwards, and make them have the traffic come out down by the canal and down Ray Street, so, but that was my opinion, so I guess I will change my vote, I'll vote yes, because it does look like we're gonna target this one business, and not only on top of that, and I don't want to target anyone, I have a friend that's gonna put one of her businesses there, and she's been doing this for a while, so I will change my vote on this, and then Carmen and I, maybe we could get together and figure out how we could get them to take the traffic the other way.
Mr. President?
Thank you.
I would just say, though...
I wish to withdraw my second on the amendment that was offered to the special permit.
Okay, very much, unless there's somebody else seconding it.
Well, I was gonna withdraw them, I was gonna, since I'm getting beat up here, which, I think I'm getting unfairly attacked, but...
All right, so the motion to add the 10th condition is withdrawn.
I just want to make it clear, I wanted the owner of the building, I wasn't targeting the business, I wasn't doing anything underhanded, I don't think, and I just want to get the discussion on the table, which I think I did.
Right.
Thank you.
It's for a discussion.
Right.
On the motion second?
Yeah, I would just point out, though, an order after may or may not be binding, as opposed to if you had a condition that said they will follow a certain traffic pattern, you know? Okay, all right, very good. So, everyone who's had a chance to speak, that has wanted to speak on this, okay, very good, then, without further ado, the motion is on adoption of the committee report, which is recommending approval with the nine stated conditions that I read earlier. If there's no other further discussion, the clerk will call the roll, a yes vote is in favor of granting the special permit to Blue Fox Brands with the nine conditions, and no vote is to deny it.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Graney?
No.
Jordan?
Yes.
Oh, she's abstained. Ocasio.
No.
Israel Rivera.
Yes.
Jenny Rivera.
Yes.
Ten yeas, two nays, and one abstain.
Okay, very good. By your vote, you have approved that and we welcome back our, uh, regular president back to the, to the rostrum.
Thank you, Counselor. Appreciate it.
Madam President.
Yes.
Before we begin again, I wonder if I could, uh, take a moment. During your presence report, obviously you weren't going to be the one that said this, but I would like to congratulate you for the award that you're going to be receiving. I believe it's next Tuesday perhaps. And Counselor Rivera, Jenny Rivera will talk a little bit about it. So congratulations. It's a big deal. It's a big deal.
Aw shucks, guys.
So yes, I just want to take a moment, congratulate our Madam President, Ms. Tessa Rumbelletti, Tessa Murphy Rumbelletti, as she was picked by the Emerge Massachusetts and she's going to be one of the candidates getting the award, the Women, Women of the Year Award. Up in Boston.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Um, Emerge is a program that helps women run for office. Um, and I participated in that program in 2021, so I'm very honored and there's a lot of really awesome women who are getting, there's, there's three other people getting the award. So it'll be nice to represent Hoyoke. So thank you.
Awesome.
Making me blush. All right. Thank you. Okay. Item number nine. Uh, the Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred an order with community support that the $15 pothole claims fee be reduced to zero to reflect practices of neighboring communities or cities and towns. Um, charging a fee to residents for a service paid by, paid for by taxes seems redundant. Introduced by ordinance in 2018, this nominal fee generates over, under, uh, $400 annually. Recommend that the order be adopted. Counselor Rivera.
Thank you. Uh, this order was filed by Counselor Givener. Um, ideally, um, there was a fee that, uh, was being charged for you to be able to claim if you, um, damaged your vehicle or possibly your bicycle through, um, via pothole. And I think the policy is that the city has to know about the pothole ahead of time for them to actually reimburse you. Um, but, uh, I think the order kind of reads where it makes sense. It doesn't, well, it doesn't make sense that we're charging people to kind of file a fee, um, when the taxes technically already kind of covers this piece. Counselor Givener, if you would like to expand on this, feel free to do so. But, um, I think we as a committee voted at five zero, um, to push it to full council because it made sense. Uh, but if you'd like to expand more, Counselor Givener.
I'm sure. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, it just seems like it probably, uh, created more work and probably cost the city more to deal with these, um, individually than what it generated. And it is the practice of neighboring communities not to charge for, um, one of these. So it just, it just seemed like an unnecessary fee for something that probably gets backed up and not dealt with quite, for quite some time. And when I found out that it generated only $400 annually for the city and doesn't tend to pay out, it, it, it just didn't seem to make a whole lot of sense to put people through something like this. So appreciate you taking it up and for the favorable vote.
Counselor Jordane.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I want to thank the committee for, uh, putting this through. I think it's just from a customer service perspective, it really looks good. You're already suffering a broken tire or tire rod and, and you come in and you, you may not even win your appeal. And now you're even out more money by filing and to even ask for help. So you, you at least, even if at least they tell you no, you're no worse off, right? Then, then you walked in the door. So, uh, I think it's just good for our constituents. Thank you.
Any other discussion? So that was the motion to pass the first reading?
Second.
Yes.
Great. Um, and so the motions to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Second.
Motion to pass the second reading, uh, maiden seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion that the, uh, passage be ordained.
Second.
Great. And motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting to, uh, remove the $15 fee to zero.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Bacon.
Yes.
Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Bartley.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Givener.
Yes.
Rainey.
Yes.
Jordane.
Yes.
McGraw Smith.
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti.
Yes.
Ocasio.
Yes.
Israel Rivera.
Yes.
Jenny Rivera.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Great. With that, you've passed it. Thank you. Item number 10 is the Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred an order that the, uh, that the ordinance relative to the payment of city lifeguards be revised so as to make sure we are being competitive to other communities in the highly competitive employment of summer lifeguards. Moreover, that the aquatics director and/or other reps from the recreation department be invited into the ordinance committee to help us review and change as appropriate. Recommended that the order has been complied with. Counselor Rivera.
Yeah, this was an order filed by Counselor Jordane. Um, I think it was an attempt, uh, to keep up with the rising, uh, uh, costs with regards to lifeguards. Um, uh, our Parks and Recs Director or Recreation Director pretty much has kind of had to negotiate pricing with regards to lifeguards to kind of come, continue to remain competitive with neighboring communities. Um, and a lot of our price, I, I, I think a lot of our, um, ranges are set by ordinance. So we wanted to make sure that, um, with the rising cost that, um, he was able to do that kind of legally. Um, and what came out of it, um, and Counselor Jordane, you can feel free to expand. Um, but what came out of it, to my understanding is the increase that they have been giving them still sits within the range that's legal, legal by ordinance. But eventually we will have to change that because it's our, it's already almost at the cap. Um, but for now, we figured, um, that the order is complied with just because we were able to do the research and have the conversation. So just to get it done with for now, but it is something that we should consider having a conversation about, um, later on down the road. Um, Counselor Jordane.
Chairman Chair, on the question.
Okay, uh, is there, well, okay. Um, all right.
Yep, we're good.
Okay. Got it? Um, so that was your motion to pass the first, oh no, that it's complied with. Got it, just kidding. Don't listen to me. All right. Um, number 11, oh, recommended that the order has been complied with. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Any opposed? So moved. Threw me off there for a second. Okay. Uh, number 11, the Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred an order, uh, for the removal of the handicap parking sign currently installed at 36 Northeast Street. The tenant has relocated to East Hampton. Counselor Rivera.
Yeah, this one was filed by Counselor Jenny Rivera, I believe. Um, and as it reads, the, 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 um, Laurie Bresnahan, former resident of Hoyoke, it seems, um, moved and no longer is in need of the handicap sign. So they gave us the recommendation that it's okay to remove it. So we recommended five zero that the order be adopted.
Um, so that was your.
Motion to pass the first reading.
Second.
Um, under discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Second.
Motion to pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Second.
Motion that the passage be ordained and the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting to remove the handicap sign.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Bacon.
Yes.
Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Yes, sorry.
Devine.
Yes.
Givener.
Yes.
Rainey.
Yes.
Jordane.
Yes.
McGraw Smith.
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti.
Yes.
Ocasio.
Yes.
Israel Rivera.
Yes.
Jenny Rivera.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
That you've passed it. Um, item 12, the Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred an order that an ordinance be established to address the two-thirds majority vote of the body for votes. Um, legal, please provide the language necessary for review. Recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Rivera.
Thank you. Um, this one has been in front of us for about a couple of months now. Um, to my understanding, well, yeah, it has. Um, we've had various different legal languages and, uh, different occasions where legal languages appeared, uh, that we may have not needed at the moment. Um, but now we have a final legal language on a two-thirds majority body of, of the people that are present. This is an order that was filed by Counselor Todd McGee before he had, um, rescinded or left, retired in a sense. I think where the confusion for me as an individual counselor came up is that for me, I, I believe that the intention was around uh, voting for everything, right, versus just ordinances. But within the conversations and within the different discussions that we had, it focused more around the ordinances. Which, again, Todd is no longer here to actually clarify some of this stuff. So we went in the direction of the two-thirds majority of the, of people present for ordinance, uh, votes for now. And other counselors that are on the committee can expand more because we've met several times. So if anyone would like to kind of express their, their, their reasonings, um, behind some of this stuff, feel free to do so.
Thank you. Counselor Bacon.
Thank you. Um, so I support the summary by the chair and we did have good discussion on this. And this is coming to the full council after, as our chair noted, a number of discussions and, um, robust discussion and compromise. So I would say that we were able to recommend this out from the full committee, um, after members came to a meeting of the minds from different places throughout discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Counselor Givener and then Counselor Bartley. Thank you, Madam President. Um, I do recall discussions about like, last term about this specifically. I wasn't able to make the meeting, so I apologize. I just wanted to confirm that the, um, the legal language is what we're trying to, what we would be agreeing to adopt.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, just following up on that, uh, good point. I just want, I think Jane did a great job of putting this together because it, it may have seemed simple, but with all the various opinions and meetings, I don't think it was simple. So I, I think Jane did a really good job of summarizing the, uh, summarizing the intent and put it in legal form that's very easy to follow.
Anyone else? Just want to make sure I didn't miss anyone. Okay.
That's the first reading?
Motion to pass the first reading.
Second.
Great. Motion to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Second.
Motion to pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Second.
And the motion that the passage, passage be ordained, uh, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting to pass, uh, change the ordinance with the legal language that's been provided, attached.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Bacon.
Yes.
Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Bartley.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Givener.
Yes.
Rainey.
Yes.
Jordane.
Yes.
McGraw Smith.
No.
Murphy Rumbelletti.
No.
Ocasio.
Yes.
Israel Rivera.
Yes.
Jenny Rivera.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, two nays.
With that, you've passed. Um, moving on to finance. Thank you, Ordinance Committee, for your work. Um, item number 13, uh, the Committee on Finance to whom was referred an order that there be and is hereby appropriated a transfer of $500 from, uh, pay Board of Health Substitute Nurse to pay Board of Health overtime. Counselor Devine recommended that the order be adopted?
Yep, motion to pass the first reading.
Great. Uh, motion to pass the first reading, all those in favor? Under discussion?
Yeah, this was a, um, from the Board of Health. The, um, nurse, um, they did, I guess the best way to describe it, a tobacco sting and out of the, there was seven businesses, four of them were selling tobacco products to a person under the minimum legal age. And the second violation was within 36 months and they each got a $2,000 fine. And the other three were selling tobacco underage for a $1,000 fine and those fines have been paid.
Alrighty, so the motion is to receive, adopt, and, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry, and pass the second reading.
And pass the second reading?
Second.
Um, and the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Bacon.
Yes.
Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Bartley.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Givener.
Yes.
Rainey.
Yes.
Jordane.
Yes.
McGraw Smith.
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti.
Yes.
Ocasio.
Yes.
Israel Rivera.
Who stepped out.
Jenny Rivera.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
All right, with that, you've approved that transfer. Item 14, Committee on Finance, appropriated transfer from $500 from firefighters to arson overtime. Uh, the, uh, motions to receive, adopt, and pass the first reading. Counselor Devine.
And this was, um, strictly for vacations, also for the fireworks, that type of thing, that they wanted to make sure they had enough money in the overtime account.
Okay, anyone else? All right, so the motion is to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a motion to pass the second?
Yep, sorry.
It's okay.
I need to get my notes together here.
No, you're good.
Motion to pass the second reading.
All right, motion to pass the second reading and the clerk will call the roll.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Bacon.
Yes.
Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Bartley.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Givener.
Yes.
Rainey.
Yes.
Jordane.
Yes.
McGraw Smith.
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti.
Yes.
Ocasio.
Yes.
Jenny Rivera.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With that, you've approved that transfer. Item 15 is a transfer, um, in the amount of $7,615.42 um, from personnel head admin clerk to personnel contracted professional services. Um, the motions to receive, adopt, and pass the first reading. Counselor Devine.
Yep, this, we had, um, the Personnel Director in and she told us that, um, this was somebody who had left and now they were hiring somebody else to, um, cover that. And that's why it's being adopted.
Alrighty, anyone else? Thank you. So the motion to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Second reading.
Second.
Motion to pass the second reading and the clerk will call the roll.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Bacon.
Yes.
Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Bartley.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Givener.
Yes.
Rainey.
Yes.
Jordane.
Yes.
McGraw Smith.
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti.
Yes.
Ocasio.
Yes.
Israel Rivera. Jenny Rivera.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
All right, with that, you've passed that transfer. Item 16, um, Committee on Finance, refer to transfer in the amount of $9,000 from Oped Development Specialists to, uh, Oped Other Contracted Services. The motions to receive, adopt, and pass the first reading. Counselor Devine.
Uh, yes, um, we also added a couple others to that that I'll talk about later, but this was a, um, development specialist, um, I believe that had left and now they're, um, putting that money back in.
Okay, is there any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I can just, one more thing.
Yeah.
It was, uh, provided staff support to the Tourism Advisory Committee.
Alrighty, thank you. The motions to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a motion?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Bacon.
Yes.
Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Bartley.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Givener. Rainey.
Yes.
Jordane.
Yes.
McGraw Smith.
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti.
Yes.
Ocasio.
Yes.
Israel Rivera.
Yes.
Jenny Rivera.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Great, with that, you've passed that transfer. Item 17, um, Committee on Finance, uh, transfer the amount of $24,570 as follows, um, from Smart Growth Zoning to, um, grant vote fiscal year of 2023 Safe Streets.
Yep.
Uh, the motions to receive, adopt, and pass the first reading. Counselor Devine.
Yep, this was also taken up and, um, they, I'm trying to just get this together here. Yeah, it was a transfer for Smart, Smart Growth Zoning. That is, it was so much easier when I was reading it this afternoon.
That's all right.
Trying to find it. Um, at any rate, it is a, um, transfer for Safe Streets and it's a grant that was, um, funded. And it is for, um, implementation grants and planning demonstration grants, uh, safety performances. Yeah, this was also, you know, when I look at all these grants that people are going for, I think it's terrific that they're doing that. And this one here, Safe Streets and the in-kind match was $15,000 that the employees were using if they had to go to late meetings or things like that. So it's certainly a good grant to have, and barely 197,000, almost 198,000, that's pretty good.
Great. Any other questions or comments from other counselors? So the motion
Motion to pass the second reading?
Oh, wait, the motion to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Great. Uh, motions to pass the second reading, the clerk will call the roll. If you are voting yes, you are approving this grant. Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Grainey?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Lucassio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. Great, with that, you've passed it, thank you. Item 19, the Committee on Finance to whom was referred an order that DPW and sewer put together a study and present, oh, present on the potential benefits of adopting a sewer maintenance program similar to the one run at the Water Department. Recommended that the order be referred to the Board of Public Works, Counselor Divine?
Be received and pass the first reading. This is what we decided to do with this in the Water Department, has this already, and perhaps Counselor Jordan could talk a little bit about it because he was on the commission at the time. But I wanted to refer to the Board of Public Works Commission because that way they can take it up at their next meeting. And I don't know if Counselor Jordan
Sure, yeah, Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, very briefly, and I want to also give credit to Counselor Israel Rivera too. He also supports this idea of having them look into the issue about the sewer maintenance program. We have one for the Water Department, you know it's now added as a quarterly bill, so if, God forbid, you have a water line burst out on your property line from the street to your meter, the Water Department will cover that cost for a residential consumer. So that's extremely expensive. This examines the sewer line. I, I know myself going certainly door to door, I've had a numerous residents who have said to me, you wouldn't believe the expense it was to dig this up. It was $5,000, $6,000, $7,000 because my sewer line collapsed. There was one poor gentleman around, he was actually a Ward 6 resident around Linden Street, who I in particular was speaking with, and it was really quite, quite startling. And what this could have done if we had a program like this, there was a presentation, there is a program through a company that's through the U.S. Conference of Mayors. I believe it was going to be in the range of around $60 to $70 a year added on to everyone's bill to have that insurance policy that, you know, if you had it. In order to keep the cost down, you need to have pretty much everybody in the program. And the other thing is, if you can't really make it voluntary to sign up for it, because what's going to happen is, it'll be just the person who said, no, I don't want the coverage, and then whammo, they're the ones with the incident, and then they're going to turn around and say, I didn't understand, I would have signed up if I ever thought this would happen to me, and now you're creating this whole problem for the city. So in order to keep the cost down, it's to have everybody in. So the good news is, the DPW has already done a lot of work on this, so hopefully they can continue that good work, and I'm glad we're referring it to them for a recommendation. I personally am strongly in support of them doing that. I think it would be tremendous benefit to a lot of homeowners who might not have $6,000, $7,000, $10,000, these things keep escalating in cost if they have that misfortune happen to them. And I think they would really appreciate this type of coverage for what is really small dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm glad it was recommended this way.
And Counselor Rivera?
Yeah, thank you. I, I kind of second a lot of what was said by Counselor Jordan with regards to it being a specific cost that's kind of sprung on to specific, not every homeowner, some homeowners can afford it. Some of them, they would, they would literally throw their, their daily budget out of whack. And I know that would be me, in a sense. So where, where I've seen in the past, and this is when I used to work at One Holyoke CDC, where some residents came in to apply for the CDGBG funding that they would get to help repair their sewage pipes, and they would not get that. And then they're stuck in a situation where, how am I going to pay this? So I thought it was a great idea, but there's also the counter idea that someone has brought, has brought up to me too as well, where it could be some of your homeowner insurance kind of covers some of this. But I think that to be safe, because your homeowner insurance can pick and choose when they want to say, yes, that works or that doesn't work, it would at least work for us to do some form of research to see how it will impact residents and how it will save dollars in the long run for the ones, we, we're, we're a very old city, believe it or not. I mean, we should, everyone here should know that. And a lot of our piping, whether it's water or sewer, is super old. So eventually, a lot of them are going to go. It just would be nice to be prepared for that, and maybe, since we're not targeting them now as a city, because we don't necessarily have the funds, but we have that little, that little leeway to do that. But thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so the order, recommended that the order be referred to the Board of Public Works, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 20, the Committee on Finance referred an order that there be a transfer in the amount of $16,300 as follows, from HPD Snow Removal Overtime and Education Plan to HPD Special Events Overtime. The motion has, or the recommendation is that the order be adopted, and the motions to receive, adopt and pass the first reading?
Yes, this, we had, Captain Cruz was on Zoom, and this is strictly for special events such as the Pride Fest, they have to have police officers there, fireworks on the 28th, they have to be ready in case it rains on the 30th, so that's why the transfer.
Anyone else? All right, so the motion is to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Motion to pass second reading?
Motion has been made in pa, uh, seconded to pass the second reading, the clerk will call the roll.
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Grainey?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Lucassio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. With that, you've passed. Item 21, the Committee on Finance received an order for a transfer in the amount of $21,000 as follows, from HPD Snow Removal Overtime and Education Plan to HPD Special Events Overtime. The motion has, or the recommendation is that the order be adopted, and the motions to receive, adopt and pass the first reading?
Yes, this, we had, Captain Cruz was on Zoom, and this is strictly for special events such as the Pride Fest, they have to have police officers there, fireworks on the 28th, they have to be ready in case it rains on the 30th, so that's why the transfer.
Anyone else? All right, so the motion is to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass second reading?
Motion has been made in pa, uh, seconded to pass the second reading, the clerk will call the roll.
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Grainey?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Lucassio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. With that, you've passed. Item 21, the Committee on Finance received an order for a transfer in the amount of $21,000 as follows, from Patrolmen to Energy. Recommended that the order be adopted, and motions to receive, adopt and pass the first reading?
Yep, and this was a, to finish up, a payment to the gas and electric for electrical lights.
Okay.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Uh, motion was to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And
Motion to pass second reading?
Thank you. Uh, motion is to pass the second reading, and the clerk will call the roll.
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Grainey?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Lucassio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. With that, you've passed. Item 21, the Committee on Finance received an order for a transfer in the amount of $21,000 as follows, from Patrolmen to Energy. Recommended that the order be adopted, and motions to receive, adopt and pass the first reading?
Yep, and this was a, to finish up, a payment to the gas and electric for electrical lights.
Okay.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Uh, motion was to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And
Motion to pass second reading?
Thank you. Uh, motion is to pass the second reading, and the clerk will call the roll. Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Grainey?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Lucassio?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to take number 54 out of order while we've still got a full body here. Second. So motion has been made to suspend the rules and take item 54, you said?
Yeah.
Out of order. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll read it into the record. Item 54 is ordered that there be a transfer of $12,125 from Engineering Services to engineer. So that's
So I'd like to make a motion to receive and adopt and pass the transfer.
Second. Take action tonight?
Take action tonight. We, as a group, we've all seen the problems associated with not having a full-time engineer. We need to have the funds available. Anybody that's been in the hiring process knows there's, right now, not enough in the budget for what the position is being advertised for. Anybody out there considering seriously coming to the city isn't going to come with a promise that, oh, don't worry, we'll hire you for this, but we'll get, you can count on a bunch of politicians to get the rest of your money. So that's, that's why I'd like to get this in the hands of our Personnel People so they can go ahead and get on with this process.
So the motion was made and seconded to take out of order and take final action?
You have to suspend our rules to take final action.
Suspend the necessary rules.
Okay. What, like, okay, so motion to suspend the rules, to take item 54 out of order and take final action tonight? And under discussion, other discussion? I saw Counselor Divine and then Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Yeah, I think Counselor Sullivan is, is correct.
So, I'm just making sure we're clear that we're not going to go to nobody, right? In the interim, because at le, the one thing I will say, and I have spoken to the mayor about it and the relevant department, they've been very pleased with the service, this particular woman who's been our contracted service, she's been doing a wonderful job. Obviously, we all want to hire an engineer, so I totally agree with what you're saying. That's the goal. But, on the other hand, there's sufficient money to keep the train going on the tracks in the meantime, right? Until we hire someone?
Counselor Sullivan, did you want to respond to that?
Yes, I'm assured there is by both the DPW Director and the Chairman of the Commission.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, I had Counselor Givner? Nope, you're good? Okay. Counselor Bacon?
I'm all set.
Oh, you're all set? Okay. Counselor Griny?
Let's move the question.
Alright. So, that would be the motion, the motion is to suspend the rules to take final action tonight. And, we said, all those in favor, yes?
Yup.
And then, we're gonna...
Pass the first reading.
Now, we're gonna, okay, great. So, the motion's to receive, adopt and pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a motion to pass the second?
Pass the second reading.
Second.
Alright, the motion is to pass the second reading and the clerk will call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Griny?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGraw Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Beletti?
Yes.
Casio?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Levee is one aye.
Oh, I didn't know you were in Zoom, Izzy, I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's why I said it.
Who knew?
You like came out of nowhere, like Oz.
Modern technology.
Alright. Thank you. With that, you've passed it. So, that was 54. We're going to go back to 22. Is it okay if I do an abbreviated version of this?
Because we've had that many times.
Sure.
Yep.
Okay. I'm going, so, it's the Committee on Finance, to whom is referred an order to, to, I'm trying to figure out the best way to summarize all of this.
To delete the stabilization fund for cannabis.
To close the stabilization fund.
Excuse me, for opioids.
For opioids, the opioid settlement stabilization fund.
Yup.
And, so, recommended that the order be denied. Counselor Devine?
Motion to pass the first reading?
Second.
No?
Just to adopt.
Okay. Before we do that, if I might, I want to mention that, and I think a lot of people are going to agree with me, this has been a very productive meeting. We've been kind to each other. We've, you know, talked things out. I think that's absolutely remarkable and I think we need to continue doing this. With that said, I am going to vote against, I'm going to vote against what we did the other night. I think we're, we're not being, we're legislators, we're not executive branch. And, I think in the, I thought about this after we had this meeting and I've been thinking about it ever since, I think it's wrong that with this particular thing, we're taking the next, our next meeting is now till August 1st, August, the first Tuesday in August and then not again till September. And, I just think it's, it's wrong that we have to have the mayor come in for every single thing that he wants to do with this settlement fund. So, I'm going to rescind my vote and vote to, I just don't want to vote no. I want to vote in favor of not to, to do this and let the mayor be the mayor.
Okay. Counselor, sure.
Could we have the committee report, though? I mean, I understand her personal...
Yeah, so, I'm gonna, I was gonna go back to the motion to pass the first reading and we'll have the actual committee report and then we can do a discussion.
Alright, well, what we did, we had a meeting.
Well, first, let me, the motion to pass the...
Motion to adopt the committee report.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the committee report, under discussion.
Okay. And, what that, what it ended up to be was, we made a motion, I don't know if it was Counsel Jordane or who made the motion, to keep $74,000 to step, to have two-step protection so that if the mayor needed to take money from this to do something, he'd have to come before us. And, I think that's it in a nutshell.
Counselor Jordane?
Yeah. So, again, I want to echo what the Chairman just said about the general decorum and everything, really also appreciate that and I totally agree with everything she said, except for the part now on the substance of this issue, which, again, good, good people can agree to disagree on. The view here on the other side of the spectrum is, where the city is going to be receiving a large sum of opioid settlement funds. We created a stabilization fund for this process. The funds that were here and put into this fund will require a council vote in order to be expended. I'm of the view that that check and balance, the mayor proposes, he has the right to initiate any appropriation, we can't spend the money without his approval. By taking and removing the money out of stabiliz, opioid stabilization, to spend it on whatever he would have us spend it on, he has to convince two-thirds of this body that that's a good idea, okay? So, I think that's government inaction. That's how, quite frankly, all of our stabilization fund works, right? So, if you go to our state statute on stabilization fund, and we have, oh, $12 or $13 million in there now, in order to remove those funds, the mayor needs to come in, make a proposal to you, and two-thirds of you need to vote yes, in order to spend it on whatever he's proposing. If we don't do that, then what's going to happen here with the opioid settlement funds, at least at a minimum for the ones that are in here, by us dissolving that, it's going to kick it back into a reserve account. It doesn't require any vote, not even a majority vote of the council. Forget two-thirds, no vote. He, it becomes effectively like ARPA money, okay? He 100, and by the way, just to give you a sense of me, Kevin's perspective on it is, I think the ARPA money and CDBG money should also have a council approval. Right now, all we have is recommendation, which that and 50 cents gets you a cup of coffee. That in the, you know, but we, there's nothing we can do about that. ARPA is governed under the federal law, CDBG is under the federal law, and they, and the mayor does it totally appropriate. He's following the rules exactly. But, the council has no say on any of those money. That was over $40 million, okay? We didn't have any vote on that whatsoever. And, I think it just gets us to a better place when we have this balance. And, so, that's why I think on these opioid funds, we should continue to operate with the settlement fund, excuse me, with the stabilization fund and not have it be more like the ARPA money. And, I would encourage people to deny this request, to dissolve this. That's why they want to dissolve the stabilization fund so it would, they could take these funds, put it in this reserve, and the mayor doesn't even have to say anything to you, you know, about it. I'm, and I'm sure, you know, he's an honorable person, he will do honorable things, and I'm sure it'll help opioid, but I like the dialogue, I like the check and balance, I think it works with all of our stabilization funds. And, I, and I would recommend that we continue to, to operate in that way. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rivera has his hand up.
Yes, thank you. And, and I, and I echo the sentiment around having the decorum. It's a great experience for me. I, I think this is the first time. So, you know, normally, I would agree, well, I don't know, I'm 50/50 with the checks and balance piece. With things like this, normally, I would agree with this, for us, especially with opioid or cannabis, to have that. But, on, on this particular issue, I think for me, in conversation with the mayor and some of the other department heads that are going to be working in collaboration to try to build something that, that can help service the community where, where the dollars are technically aligned, which is in the opioid catastrophe that's happening out here in the world, right? But, we've been in conversation about possibly, possibly putting a committee together to help allocate and spend and think about how we're going to spend this money. So, it keeps the checks and balance piece, it just takes it out of the hands of the council. And, I, as much as I would want to have a little bit of power in this situation, I have also seen how a lot of issues, again, back to the bottlenecking, a lot of issues have come up throughout my tenure due to the council not being able to agree on how best to move forward for a particular position or for a particular raise or a job description. So, like, it, it would suck to, to, to not spend any money or just to be hand, handcuffed just based on the fact that certain people do not agree, that have nothing to do with building out the day-to-day structuring of how we're going to provide services to the people in the community that have been impacted and affected around opioids, right? The opioid pandemic. I think for me, there, there, this is a space and a time where we can come together as a community and divide, devise a, 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 some form of division of community response that, that build, that lays out a housing piece, that lays out an opioid prevention piece and awareness piece, and also works in collaboration with what we got going on on Ray Street, with what the Sheriff's Department's already doing. So, there's a lot of moving pieces that we're trying, like, that is trying to be targeted and, and put on point or put in line, but it, it would handcuff a lot of the work that's being done if it has to go through council every time. Not that we are not all great people and that we're not going to, not honest people and we don't have the best interest of our people within the community, but because there's 13 people and sometimes to get everyone on the same page takes too long. It makes it very difficult for government to move forward, especially as a public administrator that kind of has to juggle the balance between a council's decision and their actual day-to-day lives. So, just kind of wanted to point that out so that other councils can kind of, pretty much, make their own decision based on how they would like to see city government run. And, if they were in the position of someone that is a department head or, or, or working for the mayor, right? Or, having to carry some of these duties out or trying to help plan how we're going to move forward spending this money. It makes it difficult, I'm not going to lie, when the council is kind of splitting hairs on certain topics that are bringing up different topics that have nothing to do or, or not necessarily in a direction that these department heads or, or employees are working in. But, again, I, the check and balances piece makes sense, but not on every occasion. So, for, with, with that being said, I, I'm going to vote, I'm not going to agree with the recommendation. And, thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. So, I will be supporting the committee recommendation and I'm looking at it from a little different point of view. We're going to be getting a lot of money, but I think the process of things coming to council creates transparency for the citizens. And, I understand some of the frustration about being able to get things done, but listening to the history, as long as I've been sitting on the council, some of the things that had the most debate and back and forth for a while ended up coming out better for the discussion. And, so, if a committee is going to be formed to spend the money anyway, why not just use the committee that we already have in council for the purpose? And, so, to me, it makes sense to keep it in that stabilization fund for those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson Burgos. Then I have Counselor Griny and then Counselor Sullivan.
So, this, this really hits home for me and I know all of my colleagues here know that I'm just about to celebrate my 23rd anniversary of sobriety. So, what I will say is that opiates and addiction is a crisis. It is not political. So, I understand some of the statements that were mentioned earlier by my colleagues and I, I do respect it, but understand where I'm coming from, that every minute we sit here and discuss where this money should go is another life that's lost or another opportunity of saving a life. Again, this is not a political engine. This is life. This is a crisis. We have lost friends and family and we will continue to do so. So, to hold up any kind of monies in any way, shape or form is doing a disservice to a community that's had their lives dangling in front of them because of this crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Griny and then Counselor Sullivan.
I'm going to be supporting the committee report that the order be denied because robust debate is always good and especially when finances are involved. And, I think this council has an obligation to discuss financial matters like this. And, I think we have certainly a right to agree and disagree. It's a very important issue. It's a very important issue to everybody and I don't think anybody would deny that. But, I think that this fund should stay as it is and I think that in the situation that the mayor should, once again, ask the council's advice to spend this money. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Sullivan?
Yep. Just to echo some of those same sentiments, to, to put the power in the hands of one person doesn't guarantee that it's going to go to the proper place or to handle any emergency. It could go anywhere else. We've seen this most recently in CDBG where the Citizens Advisory Committee, the Office of Community Development, Development and Government Relations and the full city council voted zero funding for something, yet money went to it. So, to give that absolute power to one person, and on the flip side, we've seen it go the other way also, where it's been fully recommended, fully recommended, fully recommended by four different groups and then zeroed by the mayor. So, this is our, this is our only chance to not have it go the same way as what's gone with CDBG.
Thank you, Counselor. I see Counselor Rivera has his hand up to speak for a second time. I just want to make sure anyone else who hasn't spoken yet is good. Okay. Counselor Rivera?
Thank you. So, again, I hear all the sentiments around having the council be the check and balance piece. It's, again, it's not to say that no one else is going to be involved. Again, we're working on trying to build out and working with professionals and people that are already in the field and that have been working in the field to help build out, come on, let's go, build out the committee. The council, as much experienced, um, it, we, the expertise that we have is limited when it comes to things like this. Just because we have the power to vote on certain topics when it comes to finance doesn't necessarily always mean that we are, we, we understand what's happening on the ground, right? We may see what's happening numbers-wise and dollar-wise and I, I get it, I hear it. But, when things are happening boots on the ground, it's a different aspect. This goes back to policy and practice, right? You can create a policy, but when it goes into practice, doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be carried out that way if you're not incorporating the people that are actually doing the job to do this, right? So, here, this is where I go back to this. There, there could be orders filed like we do now to bring the people in to report out on a lot of these things. Throughout the process, there should be clear communication and transparency. They are working, they're hoping to work with neighbor to neighbor who is trying to hold the mayor accountable for some of the things he said that he would do. So, it's not that there isn't no checks and balances. Granted, if you're comparing it to CDBG, which is, to me, apples and oranges, one is giving you the, to try to build your community up and community development aspect, and another one is pretty much try, a sort of a, lack of better terms, reparations for what happened around opioid. Those are two different distinct conversations and to try to align them, it's not necessarily fair to, to, to the mayor and to some of the department heads that are actually working on this stuff. Again, I'm not making any excuses because I don't always agree with the mayor, as you guys saw with the Ezekiel's plan. But, when it comes to what we're trying to build out and trying to align a lot of the services that are already being provided within the community, it doesn't make sense that we, he continue to put more barriers in front of the work that's being done. Again, we can file orders to have them come in, as we do with any other department, DPW, come in and please present, why you haven't put a speed bump up yet. We do that all the time. I don't understand why we wouldn't be able to do that in that process. To elaborate, explain, there's a lot of different things that help that transparency piece without having to handcuff department, I mean, the, and I say department heads because there's a couple of departments, Board of Health and CDBG that are going to be closely involved, along with HR, in this process. But, just to be clear, like, yes, the checks and balance makes sense for certain pieces, but if we're really trying to move forward and get things done, I mean, we haven't had a city engineer for a very long time. It's been almost a year now. That speaks to what I'm talking about. And, it's not just that one position, there's also a civil engineer that we don't have and nobody's applied for because they don't make enough money and we can't, that, that's already a struggle in itself. So, that just, those are just examples of where this type of government creates blockage and bottleneck processes for the departments that, the, the employees that are working for the city. And, in the long run, it, it kind of hurts us. But, again, thank you and have, I mean, just on to the motion, I guess, or whoever else wants to go next.
I have Counselor Devine and then Counselor Bacon.
Just really quick, Counselor Rivera took my thunder completely away and I appreciate everything you said.
Okay. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. I just want to say that I would totally count on the mayor to be taking the advice of professionals in whatever program development he's doing and in whatever recommendations he would bring to the council. And, I don't want any of my remarks to be taken to mean that I think I'm an expert on this severe matter. I will say that relative to this crisis, there are many professionals that have been involved, involved for a lot of years, but there isn't unanimous agreement on the best things to do to address the crisis. So, I think it would be very important and especially for the public to, all along the way, be aware of what programs are being considered. And, the money that will be coming in is millions of dollars, but also it is time limited. So, it won't be there forever. So, I think as the legislative body that is elected by the people as well as the mayor is, it's really important to have all the elected people in the game when it's a lot of money and it's going to affect the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And, so, Attorney Bissonette has patiently had his hand up. I just wanted to recognize you.
Motion to suspend the rules and have Counselor Bissonette speak.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Attorney Bissonette?
Thank you very much. Three quick points that I was unaware of and didn't share at the finance meeting. First of all, section five of the stabilization fund, state law, was also changed when they created these new reserve accounts. Section five now reads in pertinent part that there are two stabiliz, types of stabilization funds. The general purpose stabilization fund, which you're all familiar with, still requires two-thirds vote to both fund and withdraw from. However, the special purpose stabilization funds, cannabis, special reserves for other accounts, and in this case opioids, only will require a majority vote going forward from January 1st for withdrawals from those accounts. Also, under the scope of the agreement we have with the Attorney General, as part of the settlement, there's a very tight limit on the use of these funds that municipalities can apply for their programs against opioid abuse and, and recovery. And, then finally, also required is an annual report for all expenditures and contracts made with the use of any of these funds from the settlement and those reports are filed in January of each year with the statewide opioid commission and copies of those, of course, can be easily sent by requirement by the city council. So, just wanted to bring you up to date on those three new additions to the information and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Attorney Bissonette. Counselor Jordane and then Counselor Bacon?
Yeah, just briefly, if Mike could just send us an email with the supplemental to what the guidance he gave us in finance, those are some, you know, good points.
Yeah.
If he could just shoot us an email when he has a moment following the meeting at some point.
Sound good, Mike?
Happy to.
Okay. Thank you very much.
On the motion?
So, the motion is to approve the committee report, which means voting yes supports the committee report and does not terminate the fund.
Correct.
Voting no is to, against the committee report. Voting no is to, against the committee report and approve the termination of the fund. Does everyone understand that?
Yeah. And it requires a two-thirds vote to abolish it.
I, so actually, now I'm going to need a little extra clarification because I thought what Attorney Bissonnet was just saying was that we need seven votes.
Right.
For, to abolish, not create. Can you, I could have mis, misheard. The AC is on kind of loud.
It's really hard.
You can turn it off if you want.
No, we're fine. Go ahead.
Attorney Bissonnet, do we need seven votes or nine votes?
The motion will be a majority in this case.
What?
A number, a number.
A majority of those present.
Okay.
Hold on.
So is that seven or?
Seven.
Was that seven or nine?
Hold on one second. So we have some questions. Councillor Jordan?
Right. One thing is, I thought there was a point that was there's going to be some changes in January 2025 relative to the two-thirds to the majority. Again, we would have created this with a two-third vote.
That's correct.
Put the money in at a two-third vote.
Correct.
Now, we're saying that it can be dissolved and removed with a simple majority vote?
Well, we are not saying that. On December 23rd, the Massachusetts Legislature passed a law changing section five and changing that to say that all special purpose stabilization funds can be withdrawn as of the enactment date, which I believe was January 1 of this year, 2024, because that's what DOR has been operating on. And that's why DOR sent out that memo on opioid stabilization funds. But this is, this was contained in an additional piece. Section 197 of that bill has contained the same provisions that gave that exemption for termination of stabilization funds here. Usually, you have to keep one of these open for either three years, for at least three years before you can terminate it. This makes the exception because, frankly, because DOR couldn't give us straight advice and got the legislature to provide relief.
That's new information, Madam President. I, I think we should table that, this till the next meeting and then have a review of that because that was not my understanding, that the money that was in was going to, we, we could do this, but it was optional, and that there wasn't going to be any changing of the voting number for what was already in. So that was my one understanding of the rule. Two, that, well, that, that's basically, I, I think that covers it. That essentially, that what was in and that no more money, the other money heretofore will go into that special reserve, and there won't be any vote on that. It's just going to automatically go. So I think we should make sure we're on the same page as that because this is new information, even from finance, that we had the other day.
Okay, so there's a motion to table that's been seconded, under discussion. I have councillor Bacon and then councillor Givner. Nope. Okay.
Just a hope.
Okay.
You're not supposed to.
Oh, 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 you're right. Wait, okay. There's no discussion. That's right. So we're going to vote to table this, though.
Yeah, and get the guidance and.
And get the guidance.
Documentation.
Yeah.
Okay. So on the motion to table, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No. Roll call.
I'm gonna, yeah, I'm, I don't, I'm not trying to.
Yeah, yeah.
Roll call.
Show of hands.
Sure. So those who are in.
Roll call.
I asked for show of hands.
Guys, we've been doing so good. Guys, hey, hi, hello. We've been doing good. We're, we're just, we're not going to do that. So I would like to do a roll call vote, and that's what we're going to do. So the motion is to table. The motion is to table. Or go call the roll. Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
No.
Bartley?
Yes.
Divine?
No.
Givner?
No.
Rainey?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Agres Smith?
No.
Murphy and Bledi?
No.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
No.
No.
Izzy, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Seven yeas, six nays.
Sure.
Okay. Councillor Rainey?
Yeah, under discussion, I have a question for councillor Bissonnet.
Attorney Bissonnet?
Attorney Bissonnet.
She Rainey?
Yes. The legislator moved, you say the legislator moved on this. They did not give a decision on whether it was a majority vote or a two-thirds majority vote, deal with this issue, did they?
To deal with which issue, sir? Closing the?
Opioid, closing an account.
Yeah, that's substantially a withdrawal requiring a majority vote. That's the element of the change.
I'd like to see that language before I, I vote on it.
Councillor Jordan?
I'd like to see that language in writing.
Right.
Okay, councillor Jordan?
This, now, again, you can be in favor of doing away with this, but just procedurally, it's not okay to be dropping this type of information five minutes before we vote on something. We had a finance committee, what, a week ago or so? There's been ample opportunity to send us this type of information in advance of the meeting so that we can have a discussion, to ask questions, to look into these things. And then it's, oh, you're about to vote? Oh, okay, let me just tell you, by the way, it's not two-thirds, it's a majority. I mean, five minutes before you vote, if it's even five minutes, two minutes. I mean, that's the frustrating part is, you know, like, we're changing the rules as we're going. It's like we're building the airplane as we're taking off. We, this should have been, this could have been given out to us a week ago. And then we could have had a dialogue. You're just going to bring, raise my hand now and, and bring it up? I mean, I don't know if this is true or not. I haven't had a chance to talk. Is, is that change this? I don't know, maybe.
Councillor Bacon?
I'm sorry, excuse me, Madam President. I'm sorry, councillor, are you saying that we're intentionally misleading the council? Is that your suggestion?
Hold on again.
Guys, all right, hold on.
Madam President?
Yeah.
For you to use those type of incinerary words is not okay. If I wanted to say you were intentionally misleading, I would say you're intentionally misleading. I'm not a man of, I'm a man of more than a few words. I, I would say, right, exactly. What I'm suggesting is you are putting into the debate, right before we're voting, new information that you said you didn't apparently have at the, I'm just reading back to you what you just said to us, that you, information you did not have back at finance, and you're providing three points of information right now. And what I'm suggesting to you is, from someone who would like to vet with you the information you're just now providing, that could have been given some point after the finance meeting, and we could have had that discussion, and that's why I'm suggesting this should be tabled. Take your guidance, review it with you, look into it, and then at the next meeting, if we're all in agreement that those are the rules, we will move forward accordingly. That's all I'm suggesting.
So you would like additional copies of what you've been provided for, the two memos from January from the Department of Revenue that were attached to the original order? Is that what you're suggesting, sir?
What I'm suggesting is, it was my understanding, based on the prior reading, that to, that we did not, it would require a two-thirds vote to dissolve this, and, and.
I, I commend you to the tape of that finance meeting, sir. No numbers were discussed.
That issue never came up.
Guys, all right, hold on, hold on.
On the motion, on the motion.
Excuse me, excuse me. Oh, man, this gavel breaks. So, but I really think someone's.
Hope that's in the budget.
A bigger one.
BYOG, all right.
Thank you.
Okay.
We've heard on the motion.
We've heard on the motion, and it's been seconded. So we are going to vote on the motion.
Yes.
If, as a reminder, I had my, wrote my notes down. The motion is to approve the committee report. So voting yes supports the committee report and does not terminate the fund. Voting no defeats the committee report or rejects the committee report and approves the termination of the fund. And the clerk will call the roll. Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
No.
Bartley?
Yes.
Divine?
No.
Givner?
No.
Rainey?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Agres Smith?
No.
Murphy and Bledi?
No.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
No.
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 Six yeas, seven nays.
Okay.
We heard you. Oh, I'm sorry. With that, it does not pass. So item 23, keep moving forward. The Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order that the city treasurer please provide the city council with a review and analysis of the Pacific Legal Foundation report that states that $83,000 in home equity from 13 Hoyok homes was inappropriately taken from our residents. Guys, it's really distracting to have to, to hear things when, and honestly, like, we've, I can, please?
No, but what I'm, what I'm, what I'm saying, Madam President, is everything's lovely, and then that happens, and then it sets the tone.
Councillor, councillor, guys, no, please, please, please. No, that's it. No, we're not all going to do this tonight. No, we're not doing this. I understand where you are coming from.
I'm just trying to be positive about it. It's, I'm not trying to do it in a negative, but I'm saying like, everything's going great, and then like, that gets mentioned.
Trust me, I, I, I know that feeling.
As long as you know, you know.
I, I do know.
Thank you.
Especially after last week, I know how it feels to feel like, you know, things aren't going your way. So I understand, sir. I really do.
No, no, it's not about the vote. It's about, things are going good here in this room. We just want everybody else to be what we're trying to do here. Thank you.
Totally agree with that. Okay. It's just distracting, so.
Item number 23, please.
Yep. Reread it. Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order that the city treasurer please provide the city council with a review and analysis of the Pacific Legal Foundation report that states that $83,000 in home equity from 13 Hoyok homes was inappropriately taken from our residents pursuing Hoyok property tax liens. Please provide us the details on these 13 properties and how this could happen to Hoyok residents, including the names of any entity pursuing our liens. Please advise the city council if Hoyok has done business with Talage Davis LLC. Please notify the city council if proper safeguards are in place so we only collect back taxes and not allow the city or anyone purporting to be acting on our behalf to take residents' home equity. Recommended that the order be referred to the treasurer. Councillor Divine?
Yes, we had a finance meeting, I think this was councillor Jordan's order, and we sent it to the treasurer and asking the treasurer, as soon as he's done getting this information, to notify me, and I'll have a finance meeting right away.
Is there any other, anything else to add?
Just, just very briefly, the treasurer said he would help us with this. So we thank Rory in advance for his assistance. I appreciate what the chair said as well.
Great, thank you. So recommended that the order be referred to the treasurer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 24, Committee on Finance, that there be a transfer in the amount of $33,000 as follows from Pay Tree Climber Civil Senior Engineer Power Shovel Operator to R&amp;M Exhibit Hall Pellicier Building Senior Center Police Station, Central Fire Station, Highland Fire Station, West Hoyok Fire Station. Recommend that the order be adopted, motions, or.
Motion to pass the first reading.
Thank you.
And it's pretty straightforward, repair and maintenance of, of these particular places.
Okay, so the motions to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading, and the clerk will call the roll. Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley? Divine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Agres Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
You can have a just a point of order.
Of course.
Because we voted earlier on the ordinance change, you're on two-thirds present, does that go into effect immediately or in the next meeting, like rules do?
Yes.
It's only for ordinances anyways, wouldn't apply to this.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, good question.
Just wondering.
Yeah, 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 for sure.
Things coming up later in the agenda.
All right. Item 25 is the Committee on Finance, to whom received a transfer in the amount of $16,000 from Highways Power Shovel Operator to refuse HMEO. Councillor Divine?
Yep, that the order be adopted, received, pass the first reading.
Great. Motion to pass the first reading, all those in favor? Under discussion, sorry.
And this is just the heavy equipment, heavy motor equipment operator. I believe they're trying to hire somebody, and that's why they need to transfer.
Okay. Is there anyone else to add to that? All right, so the motions to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading, and the clerk will call the roll. Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley? Divine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Rainey? Jordan?
Yes.
Agres Smith? Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
You can have a just a vote. Thank you. With that, you've approved that transfer. 26 is another transfer, $150,000 as follows from Captains Dispatchers in Quinnville to Claims and Damages, $150,000. Recommended that the order be referred to city council without recommendation. Councillor Divine?
Yep, motion to pass the first reading.
Second. All right, under discussion?
Yep, we, we really didn't have much of a discussion. We just took a vote to refer it to the city council without recommendation, and that vote was Sullivan, Divine, Ocasio, and Givner, yes, and councillor Jordan, no.
Anyone want to add anything else? Councillor Jordan?
Yeah, just as a courtesy to the mayor and our council president, I'll limit my discussion to just simply say, I think people know why I'm opposed to this. We've, we've discussed this, and again, I'll, I'll leave it at, based on, you know, my prior thoughts. So.
Thank you.
But I will be voting no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Motion to pass second reading.
Uh, so hold on, the motion was to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass second reading.
The motion is to pass the second reading, and the clerk will call the roll. Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
No.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
No.
Agres Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Ocasio?
No.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera? Eight yeas, three nays. So with that, you did not pass that. Okay. Thank you. Item 27. Item 27 is the Committee on Finance, to whom an order is referred. Acting DPW Superintendent, please provide the city council and parking committee the following report for the prior five years, amount of meter revenue and amount of parking garage revenue. Recommended that the order be referred to the DPW for a report back in 90 days. Councillor Divine?
Yep, this was a order that councillor Jordan filed June of 2022. And what we decided to do, based on the, the information that we're going to need, that the DPW director be given 90 days to get that information to us. And we're also, today, I think it's today, we're receiving a parking study, and a lot of that may be already in there, so that's what we're doing with that.
Anyone else? Councillor Jordan? Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, thank you, just very briefly, this, the parking study is very helpful, I would recommend everyone read it. It unfortunately doesn't go into this type of information. This is more the financial type info, how much money are we collecting in the meters, how much garage revenue, like looking at that kind of pieces and giving us sort of a historical analysis. And I know, you know, Carl needs a little time, you know, he's got a full plate, so giving him three months to do this would be appreciated. I, I think we should just be aware of kind of the numbers as to how this is all working out. Is there things we need to do about adjusting rates, encouraging people more, pushing them to the garage? There'll be some, there'll be some helpful things, but that other study is good information too.
Thank you. Counselor Givner, did you have your hand up? Did I make that up? Okay. Anyone else? All righty, so recommended that the order be referred to DPW for a report back in ninety days, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Twenty-eight, the Committee on Finance to whom was referred an order that Cook and Company be invited into a future finance subcommittee meeting to review their recent health insurance analysis for the city. Recommended that the order has been complied with. Counselor Devine?
Yep. We realized, thanks to Jeffrey, that on twelve, twelve, twenty-three, this was originally in the ordinance committee and it was complied with there, so, and, and, you know, I've said it before, if a copy comes to finance and it went to an original committee, I'm not taking them fi, uh, copies.
Anyone else? All righty, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So move twenty-nine, Finance, that the...
Abbreviated reading on that one.
Yeah, thank you. That the Personnel Director conduct a comprehensive study of employee safety for the benefit of our Hoyok municipal employees and our taxpayers. Recommended that the order be referred to the Personnel Director. Counselor Devine?
Yes, this was a, it was actually a lot more extensive and Counselor Jordan was able to reduce it down to a much simpler way of getting this information through the Personnel Committee.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just briefly?
Yeah, Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, the Personnel Director is doing a lot of wonderful work in this area and we just wanted to move this more, to piggyback on the work that her and the mayor are doing in this regard, so, and we wanted to give her plenty of time, so we, we figured six months to, to kind of compile that and share back with the council when she's ready.
Great, anyone else?
No.
All right, recommended that the order be referred, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead, finish that.
Oh, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Finance, great work, lots of updates, we appreciate you. Okay, item thirty, going, yes.
I just wanna make a motion to reconsider our actions on item number twenty-six and to table it.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to reconsider and table item twenty-six. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any opposed? Okay, so moved. Um, where was I? Thirty. All right, the Committee on Public Service to whom was referred an order from Mayor Josh Garcia, appointing Catherine Pratt of eleven Lexington Street to serve on Headeck. She will replace Rosa de Pintoja, serve a three-year term. Recommended appointment, Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Yep, I'll be briefed, I know it's ten seventeen, so, so we had a great meeting, it was very effective. She was a great applicant, I did write a couple notes, so runs and operates a business with her husband in Hoyoke, which is always nice to hear. Over fifteen years of experience in the aerospace and fuel cell powered generation industries. If any of the other committee members would like to comment on this applicant...
Anything else to add?
And was voted out of committee favorably, three to zero, that the appointment be confirmed.
Great, so the, we do a roll call for this? No, just kidding. So...
No kidding allowed.
Nope. Keeping you on your toes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved, okay. Item thirty-one, Public Service, appointing Lauren Niles of forty Lexington to serve as a Commissioner of the Planning Board. She will replace Mr. Chung and will serve the remainder of his term. And Counselor Anderson Burgos recommended the appointment?
Yep, another great applicant, was happy to have the conversation with her. Notes that I have here, experience in Realtor, Realtor sales, property valuation and marketing, and I think those are qualities that, that would really benefit the committee altogether. If any of the other committee members would like to speak on this applicant?
I saw Counselor McGraw Smith's hand.
I just wanted to speak to Lauren Niles's work along with the local historic district. She's been a really great volunteer and worker in the city, has already given back and has a proven track record of being responsible and I'm excited that she's stepping into the planning board role.
Great.
Yep, also was voted favorably out of committee, three to zero, and that the appointment be confirmed.
Awesome, so the motions to approve the appointment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item thirty-two is appointing, a letter appointing Ms. Astrid Dusso...
Dusutin.
This, yes.
Sorry, thank you, Dusotin, of thirteen O'Connor Ave to serve as a member on the Recycling Advisory Committee. They will replace Meg McGraw Smith and this looks like the recommend, recommended that the appointment be approved. Counselor Anderson Burgos?
So the only note I have for Astrid was she's obviously retired, which allows her for all her devotion and time to this committee and I think that's a quality we should all have, right? To devote time to a committee, so it was voted favorably out of committee, three to zero, and that the appointment be confirmed unless another committee member wanted to speak on it or...
Not seeing any hands, so the motion is to approve the appointment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item thirty-three is a letter appointing Mr. James P. O'Connell of twenty-five Brooklyn Ave, Brookline Ave, to serve on the Recycling Advisory Committee. Mr. O'Connell will replace Ms. Marquesha Dawn Davis and it looks like that recommended was, recommend approve the appointment, Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Yep, another great applicant, was very, very impressed. It seems that he's also a longtime Hoyoker, which was always nice to hear, and he was very well versed in recycling, so, yeah, definitely was voted favorably as well, out of committee, three to zero, and that the appointment be confirmed. And of course, I'll allow my colleagues that sit on the committee if they wanted to speak on the applicant.
Okay, I saw Counselor Devine's hand.
Yeah, I've known Jamie O'Connell for a gazillion years and he's really a terrific person. He comes from a great family, father was a firefighter, his mother was a nurse, and I highly recommend him, he's got great work ethic and he's gonna be fine in that position.
Thank you, anyone else? All righty, so on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item thirty-four is from Mayor Garcia, reappointing Mr. James Sutter of thirty Fairfield Ave to serve as a Commissioner on the Hoyok Gas and Electric, that's a six-year term, and it looks like the recommendation was to reappoint, so Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Yeah, so save the best for last because Mr. Sutter definitely educated me, so he's been on this committee for twelve years, twelve years of service and what he brought to the table at our last meeting was very insightful and he knows this business very well, inside and out, and I was very highly, highly impressed. If any of the committee members would like to speak on their version or how they felt?
Counselor Devine?
Yeah, real quick, the reason Mr. Sutter was brought back, even though he's a reappointment, was because the counselor asked him to be there and that counselor wasn't even there to answer, ask him any questions or anything like that. But he's a great Commissioner, he's been a Commissioner for twelve years and he knows his stuff.
Yeah.
All righty, anyone else? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thank you, Public Service Committee. We already did thirty-five. Thirty-six is the Committee on Development Government Relations, referred an order, petition from Felix Rivera Soto Jr., an application for a street vendor license. Recommend that the license be granted. Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Madam President, so this was a pretty straightforward request for a hot dog cart permit, selling hot dogs and sodas. This is for six forty-five Hamden Street. There was some questions on the committee as to, as to whether or not the place where he would be parking his truck would be okay and we, we decided that if the permit had already been approved or the vendor license had already been approved, then this must have been vetted and so we, we recommended that the permit be granted.
All right, so the motion is to grant the license and I think this I need a roll call vote for, right? Yeah. So if you're voting yes, you are voting to grant the license. The clerk will call the roll. Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGraw Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Casio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
And Jenny left.
Oh, okay.
You didn't miss vote. Okay. With that, you've passed it. Item thirty-seven?
Thirty-seven, suspend rules, take thirty-seven and thirty-eight as a package.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules and take thirty-seven and thirty-eight as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so thirty-seven is a petition of William F. Sullivan and Company of one oh seven Appleton Street for Junk Dealer's License, recommended that the license be granted. And then thirty-eight, referred an order petition of William F. Sullivan and Company of one to three JED, JED Days Landing for Junk Dealer's License, recommended that the license be granted. Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Madam President, so this was a renewal for a business that's been around since nineteen fifty-three, so it seemed pretty straightforward. William F. Sullivan and Company, there were questions asked about the hours of operation because of some noise concerns, but it seems like they're, they're, they were falling within the noise ordinance, but it seems like there were also questions, questions brought up about possible fires on site and smoke coming from the area. We were assured that there's no active burning on site and that they're, they do all mechanical cutting, so it was decided that concerns like this, we should send to the, to the Board of Health and if we're really concerned, we can have them investigate instead of holding up this renewal. So they are in industrial zoning and, you know, they have pretty regular hours, so, yeah, any other concerns, we figured we should report those and have them looked into by the appropriate departments.
Rainey, anyone else with anything to add? Oh, I'm sorry, I had, I see Counselor Rivera's hand and then Counselor Anderson Burgos. Oh, oh, thank you. Counselor Rivera?
Um, I think for me, I didn't get to make the meeting unfortunately, but I think one of the questions I had was around air quality. It's not something that we kind of can actually measure or hold accountable at the moment, but I, I, I'm, literally, I grew up in the neighborhood where the wind blew, where the smoke came from that space and on a regular basis, it, it was awkward smells or whatnot. Not to hold anything up, I'm still gonna vote in favor of it, but I think that it's something that we should really put on our radar, really find out what's the impact, right? So that way, we can try to figure out how to mitigate certain things and try to lower the impact if there is any significant impact. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? All righty, so the motion is to grant the licenses, if you, if you vote yes, you're voting for both thirty-seven and thirty-eight and the clerk will call the roll. Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGraw Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
No.
Casio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Nine yeas, one nay. Great, thank you, with that, you've passed it. Item thirty-nine. Did we do the, no.
Yeah.
Wait, did we do thirty-nine? Not officially, right?
No.
Okay, all right.
He was in public.
Okay. Doesn't that feel like it was so long ago? Thirty-nine, the Committee on Development Government Relations to whom was referred an order from David Weinberg Communication Regarding Victory Theater, recommended that the order has been complied with. Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Madam President, so we received the communication, Mr. Weinberg was in the chambers this evening and basically gave us a summary of the items mentioned. This, I did read this in, or I don't think I read the whole thing in that committee because it wasn't a public hearing, but I did look through this and in the next order, you'll notice that all the points were, were addressed kind of paragraph by paragraph by the MIFA Victory Theater team and that's why I said earlier that I thought it was unfortunate that he wasn't there for that meeting because we essentially had the meeting and invited in their team to present based on his letter being sent in, so, yeah.
Counselor Bacon?
Thanks, so that raises a couple of questions in my mind because he sent it in and it became a communication to the whole council. So then I think he felt that that's how he was communicating to the council and I'm just wondering, as a general practice, that means everybody in the city could send in a letter and we'd all get it at the council? So just as a matter of practicality, it seems like there's something not quite right with that, but separately from that, so that might be why he didn't show up, if he even knew about it. But secondarily, what I'm wondering, since it was considered complied with, was the committee able to determine whether the MIFA theater is on the National Historic Registry or not?
No, we weren't, so that, like, there were, there were questions raised, it wasn't clear, it sounds like there was a little bit of confusion about the National Registry versus another local registry, so I, and I, I caught that this evening, I didn't really understand that fully at the meeting, but again, I don't think, to your point, if, if any communication causes us to have a subcommittee meeting, I think that's a little outrageous or a little unnecessary or maybe just overstepping a little, but more importantly, I think the time to have all these conversations, we really set it up so that, so that there could be like a, a question and answer between the, between them or maybe, you know, with the public present, but I think at this point, the best way to continue to, to address this because the, the information he brought in tonight was the same things that were addressed by MIFA, so, I mean, I think the best thing is for all of us to watch their presentation, look at the presentation materials that they sent, you know, to all of us and let them, because they do intend to do this, let them have a public meeting where we make sure that there is really an open question and answer, so we don't have to have a public that there is really an open question and answer. So we don't have to have a public hearing here where we notify, I don't even know who we would notify outside of the butters of MIFA theater, you know?
So through the chair to the chair. It seems to me, since we sent the communication from the citizen over to the Historic Board, that with the will of the body, it might be good to send this order over there as well so that they know we're interested in it. Because otherwise, it's making it a person instead of the council. And it's just a thought. And then we could get a report back from the commission.
I mean, this is a
Because we may not all be able to go to the presentation, you know?
It's a communication that was already sent over, I thought.
Well, but
Because you already referred it to the Conservation Commission.
But if we sent it over to them from the committee, then it could come, their recommendation
So where did we just send it from?
We sent the, just to be clear, there was another, item five?
Yeah. But I'm saying, didn't we send that over through the committee, like through this body? Are you talking about from DGR specifically?
I'm, yeah, I'm talking from DGR specifically. So far, we just received a communication from a person and sent it over to the commission.
Okay.
So I'm just suggesting we put them together.
Sure.
And then they can come back to us like what we did with the other order. To the
So a report would come back to us, not, we don't have to have another
Meeting.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, so do you want to make a
I'll make a motion that we amend the motion to send this order over to Historic Commission and request a recommendation back from them.
Okay.
Or a summary.
Okay, so motion's been made and seconded to send this order to the Historic Commission. The local Historic Commission.
Yes.
Right?
It's not an order though, it's just a communication.
Oh, sorry, the, the communication to the local Historic Commission so that they can discuss, weigh in and report back to the council. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 41, Committee on DGR, to whom was referred an order that City Council approve a license agreement between the City of Hoyok and Verizon for relocation of cables at the Anniversary Hill Park Project located at Scott's, Scott Tower in Hoyok. Recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Givner?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. But before we move on, I just
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. It's not your fault.
My bad.
I just speak up quick enough. So since that communication is going over to the Conservation Commission, I would also suggest that the
Historic Commission?
Oh, sorry, to the Historic Commission. I would also suggest that the presentations and all the information, all the materials that MIFA sent to the, to the DGR Committee for that night, including like their slideshow and such, I think that should be sent over as well so that they have everything and look at it together. Thank you.
Great, so second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 41, back to that, license agreement with Verizon. Recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Madam President. So, where is, oh, here it is. Okay. So, we, so there were a couple of discussions about Scott's Tower. This one is about the license agreement so that they can, so they can put electrical wires underground for the accessible park area that's being created. We, there wasn't much discussion about this because it was made, it was made pretty clear that their, their process is being held up. And there's a lot of funding in this project. And there's also city funds that are being spent. And that won't be reimbursed until we, until we complete the project. So right now, we, we really are kind of, I don't know, we're in a normal cycle where we put up the money upfront. And once the project's complete, we get reimbursed those funds from the grant. So this was just something they wanted to get approved to continue. And we approved the language for the license and it was sent over and recommended unanimously that we adopt this license agreement.
Ooh, Counselor, does anyone have anything they'd like to add? All righty, so the motion is that the order be adopted and the clerk will call the roll. Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Casio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Granny votes yes.
Oh, nice.
You made it up.
Thank you, Counselor Granny.
Everybody's here.
Look at you guys. All right. One little logistical thing. Counselor Sullivan, do I have your permission to sign off on the DGR orders that were here? Like?
Yes.
Thank you, DGR. There we go. All right. Item 42, moving on to charter and rules. The Committee on Charter and Rules, to whom was referred an order that the City Council amend its rules to create a vice president position in the City Council. Recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor McGrath Smith?
So this was a conversation that happened over several months. And we went back and forth looking at possible language to effectively change ordinance or charter. And it came down to a belief that what we were trying to do was effectively a rules change. And so the language that you have in front of us is that we're advising a change from the current rule, which says, "In the absence of the president, the senior member present shall call the City Council to order. The City Council shall then proceed to ballot for a president pro tempore. And a plurality of the vote taken shall be sufficient for a choice." And the proposed amendment is that we would then add, upon the election of the president, "The City Council shall then elect a vice president by majority vote, who shall serve as presiding officer in the absence of the president due to a leave of absence or unforeseen circumstances exceeding one meeting, and shall represent the City Council in all of the administrative duties of the position as may occur during that absence. The vice president shall not be in the line of succession for the mayor." This came out of a desire to be proactive versus reactive. And wanting to keep the senior member role as it is, not wanting to change it, wanting to honor that. But also wanting to name that we may have a president that suddenly cannot serve due to an illness during, to a death in the family due to a medical condition. And as a result, we may want to have a plan already in place. We have seen issues in the past where there was sort of a succession setup that someone was not prepared to jump into. And so the, the goal here was to be proactive and to say that we're going to vote for a member of our body to, to be this vice president role. So that in the case that our president has to, can't fulfill their duties for, you know, a temporary amount of time, that there is someone who has said, yes, I will be prepared to jump in and do that. Because their senior member role really addresses if someone is gone for a single meeting, as if they would step in and run the meeting. Their job is to be a facilitator in that moment and know the rules cold, right? And we've been lucky enough to always have a senior member who could step up and do that, right, for us. But there are many other administrative duties beyond just the facilitating of a meeting that may need to be undertaken if we have this sort of temporary ability to fulfill these duties. So the, the goal of the rules change, which would not go into effect until the next term. So this would go into effect January of 2026, is to plan for that and to come up with a middle of the ground, of the road way of responding to this while still keeping intact our respect for the senior member role.
Counselor McGrath Smith, anyone have anything they would like to add? Counselordane?
Could, could we spell out the piece about, upon the election of the president, beginning in January of 2026? Could we add that in so it's kind of spelling that out? In the event, not highly unlikely, that we would have an election for president before that time? I think just for clarity that, you know, theoretically, you could resign next week. You know, I'm saying, not going to happen, but I'm just saying theoretically, theoretically, then we, we would have to have a vote for president and then that would kick in a vote for vice president, you know what I'm saying? So I'm just saying, I, I agree, that was the intent of the committee
Yeah.
to, to put that in, that basically, the rule's going to take effect starting in January of 2026.
Would you like to respond?
I'll second that if
Okay.
Yeah.
So under
That's, that's
Yeah.
Anyway, so we can say it there or like we did at the end.
Yeah. So under discussion, Counselor McGrath Smith, did you want to respond?
Yeah, I guess my question would be, I'd love to know more. So from the chair to Counselordane. I think I would be okay with it taking an effect on January 2026. But if somehow something changed and we did have an election, I think if we have voted for this and know it's coming, and we've all agreed to the rules change, and someone does get elected, then I would be okay with this rule kicking in at any point during this term. And so I'd love to hear why you wouldn't be okay with that.
I, okay, totally honest answer is, I am somewhere in the middle on this whole VP thing. Again, I'm old school and I'm a creature of tradition. And if it isn't broke, don't fix it. So I have those going, so I'm kind of in that camp. On the other hand, you know, there's nothing wrong with trying to do things new ways. But I also am kind of, it's kind of fuzzy to me about charter is saying one thing, the charter doesn't, the charter specifically creates a president of the council. And the rule is an adaptation of functioning that. It doesn't say anything about creating a vice president of the council. Between now and January of 2026, we can get that all figured out, okay? On the other hand, if it were to happen, again, extremely unlikely that that would happen, that there would be some interim thing. I don't know if we want to necessarily get into all that about who's going to be the VP for this term, considering you know, we would have had that discussion back in January when we, everybody was running for president or the case was vice president. So I think if the role, if the goal is to have this begin in January of 2026, then we should have it in January. We should just say that. It would be my general impression. And I think it also gives time, I don't know, if nothing else, for it to sink in with me. Because I, I, you know, assuming I run again, but that the role, because I guess we're now going to have, because the way it's always been done is president's away for a meeting or two, then we vote in a temporary, the senior member steps in. And theoretically, a president pro temp has been done for that meeting. 99.99% of the time, it's the senior member is the person that's voted in as the president pro temp. Doesn't have to be though, under the, under the charter and rules. But that's kind of how it works. And then we kind of roll with that because we only meet every two weeks. So we've never had where the president's gone like MIA on us. So it's, it's not the end of the world to create a vice president. So I don't really have a super strong feeling. But again, I, I tend to lean more towards tradition, not broken, don't fix it. But if the goal is to kind of try and do something new in January, next time we elect the president, you know, maybe I'll warm to it, you know, by then. A little, that's right. Juan's got it right.
Counselor Bacon?
A while.
I would just say, since verbally, even though it wasn't on the paper, it was stated that it would be effective January 2026. Just put it in writing and what's the big deal?
Okay.
Just keep it simple.
Yeah, because now we're starting to get to like
Yeah.
subcommittee meeting again. And it's like so the motion was to amend the rule, to add
Let's say, upon the election of the president, beginning January of 2026.
Upon the election of the president, beginning January 2026. So all those in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, and then
Madam Chair?
Motion of peace.
Oh, yes?
The rule is amended.
Who's that?
Madam Chair, I, I, Counselor Granny, I have not had a chance to speak to this.
Okay, I didn't see your hand up, so I, you go for it.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm on the phone.
Okay, no worries. Counselor Granny?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to cut to the chase, you know? I'm, I'm starting to start to question some of the motivation of, of things that are happening in the council. And I'm a firm believer, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And I'm a traditionalist as Counselordane is and, and many other people. And I understand the argument, I understand the logic, but I just don't understand the reasoning. Thank you, and I'm going to vote against it.
Sounds good. Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Givner?
Um, just for clarification, anytime we adopt a new rule for, in charters and charter and rules, how quickly does that usually take effect?
The next meeting.
Is it immediate?
The next meeting.
Oh, okay. The next meeting, yeah.
Unless otherwise stated.
Yeah.
Exactly, no. That's right.
All righty, so the motion was to adopt the rule with the amended proposal. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, that you pass it. Item 43 is the Committee on Charter and Rules. That a digital time clock be provided to the president of the City Council in the City Council budget for the purposes of keeping time for the public speak. And, what's that?
So, can I speak to that?
Yeah, so this order, I'm going to read it. And City Council Rule addition to Rule 6C. Recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor McGrath Smith?
So I just want to name into the record that this ends at keeping time period. And all the language after that is redacted. I think there was just a bit of a, a lack of clarity between ourselves and the assistant to City Council in terms of what, what came out of that meeting. So I just wanted to name that, that we, you know, recommended the order be adopted with removing that last piece because that was connected to another rule we were considering around, we had a fruitful conversation around, we're attempting to run meetings that can end at 10:00 PM. And we need to change our behavior in order to do that. The agenda itself won't do it, the rule won't do it. We actually have to be more efficient, send things back to committee if there still needs to have work done, speak less, speak more efficiently. Those are the only ways that you actually get to a shorter, more efficient meeting. But we were looking at a possible rule that we ended up giving, you know, leave to withdraw, or was it table? Oh, gosh, I need to go back and look at that last piece for how it was given disposition. But we were looking at a rule that would have actually asked the, the council to track how long someone speaks on an issue and have a cap. We decided against that for a number of reasons. One, sometimes really wanting to give someone the floor, the ability to do that when they need to and want to and use their discretion to do so. And also, just the logistics around asking someone to somehow track the number of minutes that people are speaking, if they're speaking more than once, becomes really hard to ask somebody to do during a meeting. Well, there's a lot of other things going on. So we decided to, for the moment, just focus on the potential of using a digital time clock, which just could be used to help us know how long we've been spending on a specific order. Or in other ways as well for public speak, to the discretion of the, the council president in order to, to figure out if there's a way, because many councils around us do this, to just help us be more aware of how long we're spending on certain items. So that was the idea of the clock.
All right, anyone else? Counselor
Madam Chair?
Oh, hold on, I'll do Counselor Casio first and then Counselor Granny after.
Me personally, I don't think we need a time clock. We all adults here and we can keep track of things, you know? We know how long we be talking, like, we know that we been past the time, you know, when you yapping and yapping and carrying on. So we all adults, so we really don't need that time clock. We can spend that money on something else.
Thank you. Counselor Granny?
Yep, we violated the 10 o'clock rule tonight and we didn't pay any attention to that. And we can
Counselor, Counselor, we did actually vote on that at the beginning of the meeting, just to clarify.
I understand that. I understand that.
Didn't disregard the rule.
The rule was 10 o'clock. And we can vote on whether we have a time clock or not. We can vote to extend the time with a time clock or we can, or not extend it with a time clock. So it's up to the discretion of the council to do it anyway. So we don't need a time clock. Thank you.
Okay, sounds good. Anyone else? All righty, so the motion is to adopt the order. Alrighty, so the motion is to adopt the order as amended, which would be just ending at, after keeping time.
I just ask.
Counselor Bacon?
Not to be flip, but if we have a time clock, then you or whoever might be in your place won't have to say to the person, you have too much, thirty seconds left, because I think that interrupts their train of thought every time. And that's one of the only reasons I'm for this, so we don't have to keep yakking at the person and then they have to take twenty more seconds to find their place.
Yeah, makes it so awkward for me, thank you. All right, so recommended that the order be adopted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
So moved?
Nope.
And.
Quick point of order, not to muddy up the waters.
It's okay.
Now that we have a bunch of members remote, don't we have to have all our votes roll calls now?
We do. Oh, I did that first thing, that was a school committee meeting, wasn't it? Wow.
So let's just move, moving forward, we'll just.
Let me get the language, hold on. Where's the language?
But he's right. So all the votes could be challenged.
Counselor Devine helped me the other night, remember? At school, remember the school, the joint one, how we had some, we had a remote person and you reminded me correctly, by the way. Yeah, that I had to have them, so luckily we only had a handful of items.
I lost the language. Motion for the purposes, oh.
I guess since we were on Rules Committee, I started.
They just started thinking about the rules.
Motion to take, I'll entertain a motion to take a roll call vote for the purposes of this meeting would be applicable to all motions to remove an item from the table, place items on the table, package items, or suspend the rules unless there is an objection or refer items to committee. Or refer items to committee. Yes, Counselor Grainey?
I, I, I object, I think everything we did tonight was illegal and I think we have to start all over again.
No, come on, Howie.
Wait, are you being serious?
Well, no, because don't forget, everyone was in the room for the whole, only up until we got to about item.
Do it by time, Kevin, it was like quarter past ten.
It wasn't until we were halfway, it wasn't until about item twenty-five that we even had, everybody was in the room till item twenty-five anyway.
Yeah, and I don't.
All right, I withdraw my statement.
Thank you, Howie.
Okay, now that my anxiety is up here, great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, okay, we're almost done, sort of. Item forty-four is the Committee on Charter and Rules referred an order that section thirty-four of the Hoyoke City Charter amended, be amended to establish a police commission, recommended that the order be given leave to withdraw, Counselor McGraw Smith.
So, and you will see this is connected to fifty-eight. So effectively, we had a copy of the order and so we couldn't do anything with it. I would, I want to encourage everyone, stop sending copies. If you want to do good work, do good work. If you want to send it to another committee after you've done your good work, send it to that committee, they can do their thing and then that committee can send it to the next one if they need to. Don't do copies, because as a result, we have this thing that we couldn't do anything with. What was even worse was that there was a miscommunication and that when we then talked to Public Safety about them moving it forward, they had given it leave to withdraw on the basis that they thought Charter of Rules was doing this. So now we have it nowhere and so you will see that it is back on, as item fifty-eight to now be sent to a committee to continue the work that is being done. So we are just giving it leave to withdraw because it's a copy, we can't do anything with it, no prejudice, you know, against the concept of working on this, just needs to be taken up in the right way, in the right place.
All right, all those in favor of giving leave to withdraw?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Now we have to have a, we're going to, or we have to have all the roll calls.
No, right, because we took the vote so that we don't have to do that, right?
Oh, no, we didn't, now we don't have to? Because we took that vote? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Item forty-five.
Is that a roll call?
Committee on Charter and Rules, referred an order from the city solicitor regarding provisions of the charter impacted by the implementation of a police commission, recommended that the order be referred to Public Safety Committee, Counselor McGraw Smith.
So the reason why we wanted to send this to the Public Safety Committee is because initially, we thought it was in Public Safety and so we should send this letter that we had received that we could do nothing with to Public Safety.
Fair enough, all right.
Sweet, it's late.
So recommended that the order be referred to Public Safety, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved, thank you Charter and Rules, great job. Onto Joint, Joint Committee of the City Council and Schools. Forty-six is an order that the school department provide the city council with a report on their plan to use the remaining thirteen million in ESER funds by September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Recommend that the order has been complied with, Counselor Jordan?
Yes, extremely briefly, they provided us a very nice report, we had a couple, two different sessions where we went over where they're going to spend the ESER funds, they do have a very good plan to get it all spent, there's about this amount between now and September thirtieth, so I think we're good to go, all set, orders complied with.
Thank you, anyone else? All right.
Motion that the committee report be adopted.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item forty-seven, that the Joint Committee review the process for naming of the new middle school, replacing Peck Middle School at the same location. Counselor, or recommended that the order has been complied with, Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, very briefly, we reviewed the process, everybody's on the same page now, we had an opportunity to review the, the two thousand eighteen ordinance regarding how naming procedure happens for things like this, for public buildings that the council adopted six years ago. There's going to be a process between now and approximately early November where the school committee is going to get some public input, they're going to be discussing a whole array of different things relative to school colors and, and make a recommendation ultimately about the naming of the school to the council. The council has the final say relative to the naming of the school and then we got into a whole discussion relative to the history of Superintendent Peck, who was super, the youngest superintendent in Massachusetts history and he was the superintendent of Hoyoke for forty-three years and all the amazing work he did and his background as a World War I veteran and all the way through, so a very amazing guy. So I think there's a large consensus about, from everybody that was in the room, that Mr. Peck's name will stay on the building. Having said that, you know, there's going to be other opportunities for other sort of rooms and, you know, the gym needs to be named, I believe there'll be an auditorium or cafeteria, there'll be other opportunities that also raise the issue about we got different parks, different things in the city that are unnamed at this point, so for people that want to consider additional folks for different things, there is definitely opportunities out there. So it was a very good discussion and we should, we're all set, complied with.
Counselor Bacon?
I just wanted to offer a motion to suspend necessary rules to take up forty-eight with your forty-seven.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Into both of them and.
Sure, so motion to suspend the rules and take forty-eight and forty-seven as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So moved.
So moved. Any other discussion on that? All right, so recommended that the order has been complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Number forty-nine.
Forty-nine. Are you guys good over there? Counselors? Counselors? Are you good? Okay, I am, I am easily distracted and I'm just, I'm, okay. Forty-nine is the Committee on Joint School, who was referred an order that City Council Rule Ten D be revisited in discussion. D is that every month, the city council invite a Hoyoke school student to lead in the Pledge of Allegiance, recommended that the order be referred to the school committee, or, yeah, be adopted and referred to the school committee. Start, Counselor Jordan?
Yes, so Joint Committee got this from Charter and Rules and they, they lobbed the volleyball over to our committee and so we, we picked up the challenge and now we're lobbying, we're lobbying it over to the school committee, who, we got a lot of good input from the school committee and they said that they had a few different ideas and suggestions from a whole class coming in to all kinds of different, but they're going to come up with some solutions to get us more Hoyoke school, super, school student participation for the Pledge of Allegiance and leading us at very, various meetings and they'll coordinate with the council president and administrative assistant and probably back to our Joint Committee as well. So they're going to look at it and report back, so I think we're in good hands on this one and this one's been, we would request that the committee report be adopted and the matter be sent over to the school committee and they'll report back to us.
Alrighty, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved, great, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Committee guests, Counselor Grainey?
Yeah, just quickly, I just want to remind the council of what I think my role as a city counselor is, whether or not I decide to run for another term is, that I just want to make it clear that I don't represent the mayor, I don't represent the city council, I represent the voters of Hoyoke and I just wanted to make it clear that that's what my role is as a city counselor, thank you.
Okay, I'm not sure, all right, thank you, sounds good. I think that's why we're all here, but thank you very much. And moving on, we are at motions, orders and resolutions. So please, it's going to committee, I'm just begging you to not really discuss it too much. All right, fifty is filed by Counselor Anderson Burgos, order that the city council issue proclamations to the headliners at this year's Pride Fest on June twenty-second, Grammy nominated artist, MTV VMA winner, Mary Lambert, as well as contestant from season ten of RuPaul's Drag Race. Yu Ha Hamasaki. I'm so sorry.
Yu Ha Hamasaki.
Do, okay?
Oh, adopt, please.
Receive and adopt?
Yes, receive and adopt.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, fifty-one is filed by Counselor Devine, order that a sign be put up designated Barbara Bernard Way at the Pine Street entrance of the Hoyoke Senior Center.
Receive, adopt and send to DPW.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Fifty-two, filed by Counselor Devine, ordered that the building department separate their inspection list into several categories, including but not limited to three family residencies.
Receive and send to the building department.
Motion to receive and send to building department and.
When that's done, that's sent back to city council.
And, and report back to the full city council. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Item fifty-three, order that the law department, filed by Counselor Devine, ordered that the law department look into the legality of the city altering the divider preventing the left-hand turn off Whiting Farms Road into Kmart property. Is there, one, is there an existing ordinance preventing the left-hand turn and two, is this on Kmart property?
The ordinance, law department, I understand that the ordinance has been taken out as far as a left-hand turn, but the reason I filed it was because several years ago, Counselor McGivern filed an order to have the owners of Kmart Plaza put an island in the middle with trees and they had to do that, so that's why I'm wondering, I'm just curious, do we have to do this, remove that island?
Okay.
Or should Kmart Plaza?
So receive and send to the law department and have them report back?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
So moved, we did item fifty-four. Item fifty-five, filed by Counselor Devine, ordered that there be a transfer of twenty-one thousand four hundred ninety-two dollars and forty-eight cents as follows, from patrolman, sergeant to injured on duty.
You received motion to suspend rules and take it up and do a final, is that what you want to do?
Pass the first reading.
You don't want it to go to committee, right?
I'm sorry, what?
You don't want it to go to committee, right?
No, no, no.
Pass the first reading.
So the motion has been made to pass the first reading and just to let everyone know it's for eight officers, that's what my notes say. So that was the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer. Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Grainey?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGraw Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledy?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera? All right, with that, you have passed that, item fifty-six.
Finance? Or do you need?
Second.
Oh, wait.
Excuse me.
Sorry.
I wonder if we could pass this tonight because we're not even going to have a meeting until sometime in August. This is a wonderful grant, it's two hundred nineteen thousand five hundred dollars, this is the third time that they've been awarded this grant and it's, it's going to benefit so many things, so I would ask that we pass this tonight.
Okay, Counselor Bacon?
Are we time limited on the grant or do we have plenty of time?
I put all my notes away, but I, they asked me to do it tonight.
They specifically asked you?
Counselor, I mean Counselor Vega, Aaron Vega.
Counselor Jordan?
I think we do have to adopt this tonight or it dies, because I think you have to each fiscal year renew it and if waited to the last moment.
Yeah.
Because we're not going to have any more council meetings, on the other hand, it probably is wonderful and completely non-controversial, on the other hand, like, shouldn't somebody send an email around to tell us like what they're going to do?
In fairness, in fairness, he was on vacation.
Okay.
During the whole, all, all of last week, so he's just catching up to a lot of correspondence.
What are they doing with the money then, briefly?
Yeah, I'll let you, sorry, I, I was just going to say, Aaron mentioned that when he was on vacation is when they were notified about the grant, so it's kind of been a turnaround.
He's only made a, my notes.
Well, no, that explains why we're here last minute, so I, it's not his fault, but on the other hand, do we have any, it says no match, but I'm just assuming it's like we.
I can pull up.
Nobody, he didn't really give you.
It is in your packet?
All right.
It's in everyone's packet.
Oh, is it? Number fifty-six, let's see, fifty-five, fifty-six, here we go. A quick read. Gaming Commission. Let's see, okay, here we go, two hundred nineteen.
Tourism Advisory Committee.
Can I just read the summary things out loud?
Yeah, that sounds great, thank you, Counselor.
Community planning, requested amount was a hundred thirty thousand, public safety, eighty-four thousand, transportation, sixty-five thousand, gambling harm reduction, fifteen thousand for a total of two hundred ninety-four thousand. The award is somewhat less.
It's two hundred nineteen-five, the award, they requested two hundred ninety-four thousand, they only got two hundred nineteen-five.
Law enforcement was.
And the, yeah, the email that, it said that the law enforcement, public safety part was not funded.
Right.
Oh, I see, and then there's a list on page four that says where they're going to spend the money.
Yep.
Yep.
And it's going to.
But those are the categories.
No, see, those are the application, that was the application.
Right.
That they asked for and it came to two hundred ninety-four thousand dollars.
Right, right.
And they're not, they didn't get that, they got two hundred nineteen-five.
So they'll have to prorate those amounts a little bit.
But they did get sixty thousand in public safety.
Okay, those, those all seem like noble things, so I certainly don't object, so.
Okay, anyone else? Oh, sorry, Counselor McGraw Smith?
So I just want to just briefly read that, so activating vacant and blighted lots in high tourism areas. high tourism areas, continued maintenance of explorehoyoke.com, shuttle service between MGM and Hoyoke for special events, support for local events and initiatives, lighting installations for poorly lit high tourism areas, fees and costs associated with membership and infrastructure for the bike share program, and citywide harm reduction survey.
Thank you.
Motion to pass the first reading.
All right. Motion to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Bourdain?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledy?
Yes.
Lucasio?
Yes.
Izzy Rivera?
Yes.
Manamisault.
With that, you pass it. Jeffrey's Apple Watch just went off telling him it's time for bed. That's why. That was good. That was good. All right, moving forward, fifty-seven, filed by Counselor Givner, per constituent request, ordered, ordered that, okay, by Counselor Givner, hope these go where you want them to. Per constituent request, order that the handicap parking sign be removed from in front of twelve oh five Dwight Streets, sent to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Fifty-eight is filed by Counselors McGrath Smith, Izzy Rivera, Givner, myself, Jenny Rivera, Counselor Sullivan, ordered that section thirty-four of the Hoyoke City Charter be amended to establish a police commission. Charter and rules. Well.
Here's the question. So my, my thinking is that it makes sense for it to go to Public Safety to discuss the specific role that they would want the police commission to have. I think that they could send it there to other committees. This is something that.
Motion to send it to Public Safety.
Great, second?
And they deal with it in Public Safety.
Yeah.
But then they'll send it to other committees.
No, 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 that's, yes.
It's got to come here.
Right.
Right.
Sold me. You sold me at public. You totally won me at.
Love it. Love it. All right.
What time is it?
Awesome. Send to Public Safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, so moved. Fifty-nine filed by myself, ordered that Rule One of the city council be suspended for the purpose of city council going on summer recess, and that the July second and July sixteen and August twentieth meetings be canceled.
Receive and adopt.
Motion to receive and adopt. All those in favor?
Aye.
What?
Roll call.
Okay.
Right.
So a motion to amend from.
Is there a?
We have to because of the hybrid.
Yeah.
I know, but.
Order, so Counselor McGrath Smith.
Two A, it used to be Rule One.
Motion to shift, where it says Rule One to Rule Two A.
Yep, that's true.
All right, so on the motion to amend this order, all those in favor?
Aye.
And so that's just for the amendment?
Yeah.
And then ordered that this is received and adopted, and we've had a request for a roll call vote.
Okay.
He wanted to hear your voice, Brian.
It's because he's three people that asked for a roll call.
It's not because of a request.
He has such a nice voice. They wanted to hear it one more time.
Final action.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Paper says salmon on it, so I'm not going to use that one. Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos? Bartley, Devine, Givner, Graney?
No.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledy?
Yes.
Lucasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
No, no.
One no.
One no.
Great. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Appreciate you. All right.
Item sixty.
Sixty is filed by both Counselors Riveras, order for installation of a perimeter fence and implementation of a pay-to-park system at the Main Street parking lot, as well as the Canal Street Lot.
DG and R, maybe?
Ordinance?
Is that, Counselor, are you still on the phone? Counselor, either Counselor Rivera, are you still on the phone?
I'm here.
Oh, hi.
I'm here.
Okay, great. Where would you like this sent?
Public Safety first, and then it can be sent anywhere else after for more work if other things.
Okay, great.
Send to Public Safety.
So we'll send to Public Safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Sixty-one, Counselor Bacon, order that the sunken manhole cover near two ninety-two Westfield Road be repaired, refer to Veolia and DPW.
Receive, adopt, and send to DPW and Veolia.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sixty-two filed by Counselor Bacon, order that a temporary speed hump also be placed at the top of Aprima on the hill going toward Rock Valley Road.
Receive, adopt, and send to DPW, please.
Receive, adopt, and send to DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Counselor Bacon, item number sixty-three, filed by Counselor Bacon, that the city solicitor issues the annual report of the law department in accordance with section two, one, five, four of our ordinances.
Motion to receive and adopt and send to the law department and ask them to return a report by the end of July.
Item President?
Yes.
Excuse me. This specifically says, the department shall, doesn't say may, annually in the month of January. So we need to send it to the law department, but they don't need to take it up till January because that's what it says. Shall, not may.
No, no. If I may.
Yeah.
They're six months late.
I don't care. That's what it says. Shall annually.
Which means they have not followed the ordinance. So I'm, ask, this is.
This is your order.
Requesting them to come into compliance with our local law. Thank you.
Okay. Yep.
Sorry, it's not a point order. I'm learning how he's point order. So through the chair to Counselor Bacon, so you're asking for the report from last year, ending in January of two thousand and twenty, so basically up through December.
Right. I'm asking for the report that was due in January of two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay.
Thank you. And you're asking for it now.
Okay. All right.
Because we didn't get it yet.
Okay, guys, it's fine. It's really.
I don't want to debate it.
Yep, I don't either. I don't either.
I was just going to say, we could attach it to the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-nineteen, and other reports.
All right.
They'll be in the invisible filing cabinet.
Sure, maybe we fell in order for that.
I don't think they ever existed.
Yeah, maybe we just fell in order for those, too. But, great, we're gonna, yes.
I think that we did in the past receive written reports.
Okay.
From the law department.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Great. Moving forward, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item sixty-four, filed by Counselors Bacon and Sullivan, order that city council executive session minutes be provided to city council as required by the open meeting law.
Receive, adopt, and.
Send to the law department.
Send to the law department.
Receive, adopt, and send to the law department. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Late file. So close. Okay. Sixty-five filed by myself and Counselor Bartley, that the city council suspend its rules, specifically Rule Two A and any other rule for its, well, yeah, good, for its two regularly scheduled meetings in September two thousand and twenty-four, and meet instead on the first and third Wednesday of that month at seven PM. The meeting dates would be September fourth and September eighteenth. The reasons for this are because the first Tuesday of September, the Commonwealth scheduled its state primary. On the third Tuesday, the Big E scheduled its salute to Hoyoke Day.
Motion to receive and adopt.
Suspend the rules to take up final action.
And adopt.
And then adopt.
Motion to suspend the rules and take up final action to adopt.
Second.
Second.
And any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Sixty-six filed by Counselor Bartley, that the Board of Health, Health Commission please be invited to attend to discuss if changes are possible to the changes to the tobacco license issuance policy that supports common sense, economic growth on a case-by-case basis, and also protects public health, refer to public safety. This order was given leave to withdraw five fourteen twenty-four, but I'm refiling it. So send it to Public Safety?
And can we have a copy of the old order in Public Safety?
A copy of it?
Well, whatever he originally, it said, it was, this order was given leave to withdraw five fourteen twenty-four. He's refiling it, whatever that was. I'm sorry.
He put it, didn't he?
I think we've already, is it that?
It's there.
Okay.
Okay.
It is in the back of the packet.
Okay.
Okay.
Public Safety.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? So moved. Sixty-seven filed by Counselor Devine, ordered that there be a transfer of a hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty-six cents from cannabis stabilization to claims and damages.
Finance?
Finance?
I was going to make a motion that we pass it tonight, because, only because we're not even going to meet again.
Is it the same thing that it's gonna?
You know, we're not going to meet again for a regular session until August, the first Tuesday. I'm not sure when I'm going to have a finance meeting because we'll probably have orders in finance.
So, because it's the end of the fiscal year, so, okay, it's okay. Okay, Counselor Bacon?
Do we know what we're paying for?
I can't. It's so hard to hear because of the air conditioning.
Do we know what we're paying for?
I don't know off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
And I second the motion referred to.
Okay, and I'll take it up whenever I can, which might be a couple months.
Counselor Jordan?